If everybody will start getting to their seat.
Well, that works.
Good morning. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, June 13th. We'd like to start this morning by asking David Price, would Perrin Baptist Church come forward? And following the Pledge of Allegiance, be led by Larry Harvey, please rise if you can.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. I want to read just one verse of scripture that we find in the Book of James. James Chapter 1, verse 5 said, "As any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God to give it to all men liberally, and abrate it not, and it shall be given him." Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we come before your throne of grace this morning, Father, I lift these five commissioners up. And Father, I ask you to give them wisdom of Solomon, to make the right and correct rulings according to your precepts and your word. Father, thank you for the opportunities that you present to our county. We thank you for the resources that you provide. And Father, I pray that you'll just preside over these meetings. And Father, that as the ones come before you this morning, Father, give those ones that petition these commissioners, the words to say that they may penetrate the ears and hearts of the commissioners, that they can make a correct ruling. Father, just bless these proceedings today. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. The allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Price, and thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minute.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any additions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. We're going to move into the, we're going to recess the Board of County Commissioners and convene the Port Authority Meeting, and the chair will entertain a motion for the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Port Authority Regime Meeting Minutes, May 9th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Next, we're going to open the floor for public comment for Port Authority items. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on Port Authority items? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we'll move on to Item C, which is the potential sale of the land at the business park. Check on page 15 of your packet. You want to take that one, Julianne?
Yes, sir, I'll be happy to. The Chamber of Commerce presented to administration a potential letter of interest by entity currently titled Project Owl. Their proposal is for 150 acres or those available within the Port Authority out at the business park at $40,000 an acre. There was some legal term negotiations between the applicant and administration. The only condition that the applicant has brought back is to amend the deposit from what is market average. With that, I do believe I have a representative of the applicant here, and we will take questions from the board and try to field them as best we can.
Does the board have any questions at this point?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Julianne, if I'm not mistaken, this will, this will end our property if we sell this in the business park, completely, correct?
That is the conceptual plan, yes. This is a letter of intent, so the, the final details of the acreage and legal description of what would be viable for them and included in the offer is still details to be worked out. I do believe there's a portion of this that's in the county, not the Port Authority, so that obviously would have to be dealt with separately. But their intent is 140 acres or what's available remaining acreage.
And I see we have a deposit of asking for $10,000, is that correct?
That's what the applicant is asking to amend the deposit down to, yes.
Seems awfully low on 140 acres at 40,000 an acre, but we'll talk about that, I'm sure, as a board. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, if there's no questions, does the, how does the board want to handle this? Chair will entertain a motion, where we can have more discussion. You know, the only thing I, that I'd say about it is I know this has been going on for several months, and it's been going back and forth between our attorneys and their attorneys and for different, different discussions and only, I think they agreed to all conditions that came from our attorney with the exception of they'd rather have a smaller amount of deposit, I think was the only thing that it, that it wound up. So, you know, this is not saying that we're gonna sell the land or that they're gonna buy the land, it's saying that they're gonna look into it and if all, everything works out, that they'll, they'll buy it, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's what I'm gonna say, that's what I'm understanding is, from talking to Julianne and reading, is that this is a letter intent to, to move forward, and they have a due diligence period of what, 180 days?
Yes, sir.
Julianne, and then the comeback, and then the final details will be worked out later, correct?
Well, outside of what you're agreeing to inside the letter of intent, and county attorney can tag in.
Yeah, a lot of the letter intent is, I mean, you're laying out what the expectations would be, so it's not the purchase and sale agreement, but you're, this is the precursor to a lot of that negotiation.
Do you have something, Mr. Harvey?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I don't, I'm glad we have the land, I'm glad we have a company looking forward to coming, I'm glad they're trying to invest in Putnam County. I think 10,000 is low, if you're really serious about it, but I'm not gonna get hung up on that. I'm not gonna have, miss an opportunity to get jobs in, in, in economic development in the county over that. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What was the original deposit amount that we were asking for?
5% of the sales price, which is average.
Which equates to 280,000.
But you know, one of the things that I realized from real estate from years ago all the way up to the present is that there may be an average and there may be an asking a lot of points, but I don't know that on any real estate deal that I've ever done personally that I've ever received or given 5% of the payment down as a deposit. So it's usually a mutually agreed upon amount that would cover your expenses on your side if something happened on, that fell through or they just backed out for no reason or cause. And so, I don't know that we'd be damaged over $10,000 if they did back out for some reason other than what they were allowed to in their LOI.
This is, this is only for six months, correct?
Unless it's extended. I mean, again.
We'd be involved in the extension though, correct?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and authorize the chairman's execution of the letter of intent, with amended as requested by the applicant.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
For purposes of discussion, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, under discussion, Commissioner.
I mean, I, I would like to see the, the deposit a little higher. I do think 10,000, I mean, I think I put $10,000 in my house, and I had to close in 30 days. I know this is a little more complex. Maybe not the 5%, but maybe like 2.5% or maybe 100,000 seems reasonable. It is a, we have been getting a lot more interest in, in those properties, so to tie it up for six months is some risk to the county and to the taxpayers. So I would be a yes vote if we did it at 100,000. I think that, and I don't know if the person's there that can help make that decision on their side, but I think that that would be more feasible and more risk intrusive for us as a county if they did back out. I'm hopeful they don't back out, I love the idea of what we're talking about, but I do think we do have to leave some protection for ourselves.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
You know, I see this is a little bit different. This land has sat for 30 years probably, and, you know, we're just looking at 180 days, a six-month period. This, this project could potentially bring, you know, first of all, you have the land sale, which is $5.6 million to the county, and a potential for thousands of jobs, and I don't know why we're worrying about, you know, a $10,000 deposit versus a $100,000 deposit when we don't, it's not like people are lined up out there. You know, we only have two businesses out there, we have two tenants, and to me, I just would like to see this move forward with the lead to potentially put it back on the tax rolls. That's where I'm at.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, and I agree with most of what you're seeing there, but we have seen an uptick in activity there in the last year. So we have seen a lot of people coming in and making offers and discussing it, and so I think this is the time when we need to, to take in offers and act on them, but it is what it is.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, is, with your comment, is there any riches or any way to determine what maybe our expenses would be, you know, during this process?
No, I mean, traditionally, when you're looking for a deposit, it's an opportunity cost issue. Like, if somebody else comes to you, then you're not gonna be able to enter into any type of negotiations with them, so it's lost time and cost. It's not what our actual costs would be.
Okay.
Actually, I'm with Commissioner Wilkinson, the land's sitting there for 30 years, and we got somebody coming up here, I think it can hold off six more months if we have to start talking to somebody else about it.
I agree.
So they're not asking for a two-year LOI, just a six-month LOI, so I don't think that's uncalled for.
Right, and I, I agree because, you know, you know, there has been more interest, I don't think, like you said, people are beating the door down, you know, to develop out there, so, so I'm with y'all, I'm with y'all on that one, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Mr. Sullivan, would you come forward, please? He's going to give us a short and concise Port Authority update.
His tie matches too, Mr. Chairman, he's got a port tie on today.
Good morning, Commissioners, Port Authority. As we request that, I'll give you a quick update of what's going on at the port, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. We're still working with the United States Army Corps of Engineers on port development to get the river dredged so that we can have commercial access, commercial vessel access, I'm sorry, to the port. We're still in the economic feasibility stage of that study, the completion, estimated completion date per the Corps for that study is June of 2024. Once we have that completed, we'll move on, so hopefully successfully, into the dredging phase. As you know, we received a grant from the U.S. Maritime Administration, which is a division of the United States Department of Transportation, for a port development study at the, our port. At this stage, we're still discussing NEPA exclusion possibilities with them. Once that's straightened out one way or the other, we'll know how we'll need to proceed in terms of getting the funds and having them move forward. MARAD will be inspecting our facilities later this month as well, so we're very hopeful that things will be rolling in that arena very shortly. As Florida DOT is concerned regarding the port, as you know, their work with the Florida, Northeast Florida Expressway is critical to our success, and that involves the raising the Shands Bridge to its new format. That completion date has been delayed to 2030, so that gives us a little more time for us to get our other matters taken care of, to have commercial traffic come to Putnam County over the river. One good news regarding that change on the bridge is that the, I guess you would call it the passage underneath the bridge originally was gonna be at an angle, they have changed that to a 90-degree, which will make it easier for larger vessels, which we are interested in getting underneath the bridge, so there was some good news out of the update from the bridge. We will be attending the Florida Ports Council, which we are now a member thanks to the legislature, that will be in the first week of August. We will be discussing them and picking their brains so that we can do the best job possible here in Putnam County. And finally, one little interesting tidbit, we have been approached by an interested party regarding leasing one of the warehouses at the port. Once we have a little more information, we'll bring it to your attention for your decision and some action. And that concludes my report. I will take any questions?
My first question would be, if we were able to get, get done a little quicker, couldn't the shorter commercial traffic still come down? I mean, I know large container ship couldn't, but the, the smaller container ships, would they not fit under the Shands Bridge now?
That's a good question. I do not know that answer, because I believe the current height is like 30 some feet, I do not know what.
36, okay.
So I do not know if any commercial vessels go under that, but we can explore that option.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything, Commissioner?
That's kind of along the lines of my question. We can't wait till 2030, I think that's ridiculous. There's, there's smaller vessels that come through the river all the time and go past Putnam County and go further south. There's, I've seen vessels that were small barges that where they trade off, and they come as far down as, I think it's Astor, where that restaurant is on the edge, they go underneath that bridge, which is a small drawbridge. We definitely need to be looking at utilizing this port sooner than later, in my opinion. I think we need to be looking for people that have those smaller vessels and smaller barges. A barge is a flat thing. It can also be brought there today at its current depth, we don't need to wait till it's dredged, which is what I've been saying for two years and seven months. We don't have to wait till it's dredged, there are other places that have small ports all along the river on the other side of the Shands Bridge today for those vessels that aren't 36 feet or higher, and we need to start looking at those opportunities, because they are there. The depth only matters for a certain weight and displacement of water. Again, the seven feet accommodates a lot of different vessels, a lot of different barges. Obviously, we have some maintenance stuff we could do. I'm hopeful that you do come back to us with some, looking at that type of thing, because 2030 just is, it's another seven years, and we could be utilizing it today. There are people that have utilized it. Veritas Steel has utilized it, they've used the bulkhead, they've loaded steel on the vessels and brought it out of here. That has happened. It's already happened in the time that I've been here, so that, this, I'm a little bit disappointed that you don't have that answer, because it's, the answer's kind of obvious. It can be done, there are smaller vessels, we know that, because we've had them land there before. My question, I guess, is more to the staff and to the rest of the board, is in the role that we appointed him to, is he only for the port manager for the app's port, or is he the Port Authority manager? Which is distinctively different, because, no, no, I'm just curious, because I don't, is he just over the port where the water is, it's that piece of property, and how we're gonna manage that, or is it the whole Port Authority itself?
Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Chairman, if you, if you don't mind, Mr. Sullivan cannot be the Port Authority, because that sits with the Board of County Commissioners as a separate seat. Mr. Sullivan was appointed as the port manager to manage the facility and do the things that we're asking him to do. The conversation regarding the opportunity to bring other vessels in, we still have vessels that do utilize the port from time to time, so we do have the opportunity to continue doing that. More important, what Mr. Sullivan's given an update on today was, was what he was directed to do was, an update as to where we are with the project. Our project is moving forward through Army Corps, as it always has the last three years. Army Corps moves slowly, but we're right on target with, with the Army Corps. We have no control over the DOT work schedule in the raising of the bridge, it was scheduled to be raised earlier, their work project got pushed back to 2030, that's, there's nothing we can do about that. However, Mr. Sullivan's also advertising, or not advertising, but taking on conversations about potential leases to the facility as we speak today. He's been in contact with some folks that want to look at leasing our facilities for a project that they're working on. So, you know, as far as the port itself and the project that Mr. Sullivan is leading, that is where we're at with it, but he is not the Port Authority, he is the port manager, and the Port Authority resides with Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Sullivan? Sam, thank you for the update.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, is any general discussion items for the Port Authority at this time? Hearing none, I'll re, I'll adjourn the Port Authority Meeting and reconvene the Board of County Commissioners, and we'll move on to Item Number Four, Presentations. Ms. Corona, would you please come forward?
Robert, I see that we have the whole meeting room full of Public Works employees with us this morning. Welcome to the meeting, guys, and would y'all like to please come up and stand with Mr. Robert on his retirement? All of you come forward. Figure you could use a little support there, Mr. Freeman, y'all gonna have to tighten up now. Y'all gonna have to act like you like each other, get in there. Gather around.
I think we're all packed in here nice and tight now. Good morning, Commissioners and people of the audience. Mr. Freeman came to me about two weeks ago and said, "I got something to tell you." I was like, "Oh, no." He says, "I've got to a point in my life I need to retire." I said, "Okay." So, we're gonna miss Mr. Freeman tremendously, his leadership is phenomenal, you can see by the people that showed up here this morning that they truly care. I hate to say it, but whenever he told me, he was sad. He told me, he said, "I, I wanted to hang out and see where this place is headed, because it's, I like where we're going." And that really meant something to me, because we've made some serious changes at the facility, and he wanted to be part of them, but he was just unable. But we're gonna miss Mr. Freeman tremendously, we're losing a lot of institutional knowledge. You could ask him about anywhere in the county, he could tell you basically how wide the road was. I mean, he just knew this county in and out, we're gonna miss him tremendously, that's all I can really say, is we're just gonna miss him. We're gonna miss his leadership. You could always call him on the phone, and it was just, we could get the jobs done, so I wish him the best in his future. I told him he could always come back, you know, we could, if he got to the point where he wanted to come back with us again. He retired from, I think it was Connecticut up north, with a lot of experience in the, in the public works, road and bridges up there, and he came back and served our county for almost 13 years. So, we'd just like this morning to, to thank him for his 13 years of service that he did provided the citizens of Putnam County, and that we're gonna miss him and wish him all the best in his future endeavors.
This is bittersweet for me. We've been colleagues for probably 10 years or better. A year and a half ago, I got to be this man's coworker. Today, I get to still tell my friend, congratulations, long and happy hot retirement.
I can't believe I got this much support from my coworker. This has been one of the best jobs that I've had in my entire life. I enjoy working for this county, enjoy working for the administration, the residents, and I can't thank my coworker enough for their support today. I wish my family was here, but unfortunately, they were not able to make it. I can't thank you guys, and I truly, truly appreciate, I'm gonna miss this county. I love my job, but there come that time when a decision had to be made, and it was a tough one, and guys, I'm gonna miss you all. This is not, this is tears of promotion, and I can't thank you guys, thank them enough, Mrs. Suggs, Commissioners, all. Everyone, I truly love y'all, appreciate it. Thanks for coming up, this is more than what I could ever want. Thank you all.
Thank you for your service.
We do have a plaque that we were gonna present, Mr. Freeman, I'm sorry I missed it, and it says, "Presented to Mr. Robert H. Freeman for his 12 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Putnam County, his retirement will be June 29th of 2023." So, Mr. Freeman, that's your token of gratitude, and we sure appreciate you. And we gotta take a picture, so.
You're gonna take a picture?
Bring everybody up.
Or just have the camera look at y'all that way.
JR, I'm sure you're gonna keep his personal cellphone, because you're gonna have to call him with all the knowledge that he has.
Yes, sir, yes, we, we sure will, and I actually asked him, I said, "Can we call you, we need somebody?" He said, "Absolutely, sir."
All y'all come forward, right, line up right here, and let's get a picture. Robert, we want you front and center.
Congratulations, thank you.
Y'all gonna have to make two lines.
Hey, just remember, consulting fees cost more.
Hey, some of y'all can come up here if you need to, the taller ones, come on up.
Just taking the picture.
Can you get us all in there, Lee? Good deal, thank you.
This is bittersweet for me. We've been colleagues for probably ten years or better. A year and a half ago, I got to be this man's coworker. Today, I get to still tell my friend, congratulations on the long and happy hot retirement.
I'm lost for words. I'm truly lost for words. I can't believe I got this much support from my coworker. This has been one of the best job that I've had in my entire life. I enjoy working for this county. Enjoy working for the administration, the residents, and I can't thank my coworker enough for their support today. It's, I wish my family was here, but unfortunately, they were not able to make it. I can't thank you guys and I truly, truly appreciate. I'm gonna miss this county. I love my job, but there come that time when a decision had to be made and was a tough one. And guys, I'm gonna miss you all. This is not, this is tears of promotion and I can't thank you guys, thank you enough, Mrs. Suggs, Commissioners, all. Everyone, I truly love y'all. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming up. This is more than what I could ever want. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
We do have a plaque that we were gonna present, Mr. Freeman. I'm sorry, I missed it. It says, presented to Mr. Robert H. Freeman for his twelve years of dedicated service to the citizens of Putnam County. His retirement will be June the twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-three. So, Mr. Freeman, that's your token of gratitude and we sure appreciate you. And we gotta take a picture, so.
JR, I'm sure you're gonna keep his personal cellphone because you're gonna have to call him with all the knowledge that he has.
Yes, sir. Yes, we, we sure will. And I actually asked him, I said, can we call you? We need somebody. He said, absolutely, sir.
All y'all come forward, right, line up right here and let's get a picture. Robert, we want you front and center.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Y'all gonna have to make two lines.
Hey, just remember, consulting fees cost more.
Hey, some of y'all can come up here if you need to. The taller ones. Come on up. Can you get us all in there, Lee? Good deal. Thank you.
Yeah, while some of you guys are headed back down to District One, if you could stop in District Three and do some stuff, it'd be just fine.
That's just wrong, Commissioner. I'm down.
You heard that, didn't you?
I did. I did. Yeah, I do.
We're gonna move down the presentation items to Honorable Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
First of all, I'm gonna start with employee of the quarter. So if I could, I would like to call Mr. Thomas Evans up to the front. He is our employee of the, the quarter. And something I'd like to share about Thomas real quick, it was, it was quoted in one of his fellow employees nominations of him to be employee of the quarter and they said, you know, Thomas is, is normally a very quiet guy. As, as most of you who know Thomas, he can be, but he gets to visit every one of our offices every day. He, he runs the mail for us. And so the quote was, you know, whenever he comes in the office, even though he's quiet, you know, if somebody just engages with him a little bit, he'll instantly light up and, and, and Thomas is a really, really good guy, a really good employee. And congratulations, Thomas. I can't, I can't thank you enough for what you do for us. So, thank you, sir. Next, I would like to call up Mrs. Sandra Taylor, Sandy Taylor. She can come up to the front. Twenty-five years of service and I would like to, to just say that I've gotten several calls from constituents that she has, she has helped. She works in, in customer service, court intake. And I can tell you that the people that call and, and give feedback on Sandy have really good things to say. I know she's laughing. I know she's laughing. But I will say that the people that have gone out of their way to call me to say what, what a great job that she has done and, and I can't thank her enough for all of her years of service to the clerk's office. Thank you so much, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
Okay, before, before we move into public comment on agenda items, I'm going to change the agenda around a little bit. And, and we're gonna move the code enforcement hearings up to this point if y'all are ready to move forward. So Thomas, if you'll come up.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
First case is twenty nineteen, one, one-one-six. Address is four oh five oh Farrell Avenue. The property owner's name is Tammy Altieri and Vincent, you know, Cabellis. Violation was unsafe structure and care premises. The original fine amount was thirty-three thousand, twelve dollars. And the total cost of enforcement action was one thousand six hundred sixty, sixty, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. The property owner has recently purchased the property. It's now compliant and is requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Is anybody here that would like to speak for or against this request? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that on codes case two thousand nineteen dash zero zero one-one-six. Staff recommendation of one thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars to be paid to the Board of County Commissioners within ninety days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Thomas.
Second case is twenty nineteen, six-seven-three. Address is three one-two-one Carter Lane. Property owner's name is Jiminy from Bimini Incorporated. The violation was unsafe structure and care premises. Original fine amount was twenty-two thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. Total cost of enforcement action was one thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. The property owner has recently purchased the property. It is now compliant and requesting the fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Is there any questions? Is anybody here that would like to speak for or against this case? Please come forward. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Larissa Ricketts Owens, three twenty-six St. John's Avenue.
It's the other one.
You can pull that down, Larissa.
Uh, Larissa Ricketts Owens, three twenty-six St. John's Avenue here in Palatka. Uh, I'm the Realtor who's been representing the property owner and he apologizes that it took so long to get it done. Unfortunately, he gave three thousand dollars to someone to do it several months ago uh, who I think was arrested for taking his money and not doing it. So luckily, we were able finally to get the buildings torn down and hopefully he's gonna be putting something new there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Case number two thousand nineteen dash zero zero six-seven-three Jimmy from Bimini. I couldn't resist that. I'm sorry. The fine to be paid to the Board of County Commissioners is one thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars to pay within ninety days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Thomas. Okay, with that being done, we'll move into the consent agenda or public comment on, uh, agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debated deliberations on matters about which the board has received no prior information. Please limit to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed in the meeting room at the entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to our deputy clerk who sits over on your right. And with that, is there anybody that, I don't have any cards. Do you have any cards, Ashley? Is there anybody here that would like to speak on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move into the consent agenda. Uh, is there any items that would like to be removed from the consent agenda? Commissioner Adams, Act? Mr. Harvey?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
D and F.
D and F.
For discussion.
No problem. Okay.
Is that D and F, sir?
That's what you said yesterday.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the consent agenda forward on items A, B, C, E, G, H, and I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Item D, Commissioner Wilkinson.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to discuss this a little bit. You know, we, since I've been here, we previously had some issues with a contractor out in St. John's Harbor for their MSBU. And it's important to me that we don't throw good money after bad or whatever the saying is. And I don't want to have to go behind a contractor and do any kind of work. And I know this is a new company and I just want to know what staff can say that they're gonna do to assure that we have a good quality of work so that we don't have a repeat of what happened in St. John's Harbor.
Well, I believe that Mr. Grimes may speak more detailed to this, but that is why we now have an MSBU coordinator as well as project managers that do quality compliance checks. So before invoices will be signed off to be paid for, there will be a quality check to ensure the work was done as specified.
Okay. Mr. Grimes, you have anything to add to that?
Sorry, I was, yes, so, uh, Mr. Paprowski, which is our MSBU coordinator, works with them day in and day out as well as, um, we have some other folks out there that do quality control, make sure. Uh, we had a pre-construction meeting yesterday with the contractor, the vendor. Um, we told him what the expectations of the county were, um, and he was on board with that, so everything should be well and good. So we'll see where we land. But yeah, we have quality control that, that checks it on, on a routine basis.
I'm glad to hear that. That's, that's just a discussion I wanted to have. So, um.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson, for that. Um, these are out in West Putnam and they're over two hundred miles of roads. And one of them, West Putnam for sure, has elevations, the highest point in Putnam County is in West Putnam off of this, off this West Putnam MSBU. A dirt road's kind of like a snapshot picture at that moment. Uh, what we find in West Putnam is the roads get graded two days later or even that afternoon, you get four inches of rain. And then the road's right back to where it was. So there is no good dirt road. Commissioner Dersher taught me that years ago. But it's just better than some and we appreciate this. This, this process has worked its way through an appeal or we would already have had these roads being done, but the county's been very diligent on getting this work done even on an emergency basis. So I'm looking forward to Tony checking on that as quick as he possibly can. And Commissioner Wilkinson, I appreciate your concern about that.
With that being said, I move to approve item number D, bid award for maintenance and shaping of MSBU roads in Putnam County.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Item number F, Commissioner Wilkinson.
Uh, just a question. Um, I read through the proposal and is this building going to be similar to the existing building that we have for the exhibit hall now?
Um, no. This is a self or enclosed, air heated and conditioned exhibit hall. The Maltby Building will be its name and it'll be outside of your open exhibit area now. So this is, um, the fair boards' vision was that they would have conference area to hold up to five hundred and seventy people.
Okay.
Um, they ultimately, their end goal is to have a stage so that they have a, a ability to enhance what they're able to offer out at the fairgrounds. It will have a commercial kitchen, um, some executive conference rooms or offices so that conferences could come in and be held there for various needs.
And will we be using the majority of the funds or all of the funds from the appropriations or will we be using some county funds as well?
So at this time, it's all being funded through FDACs, the agricultural. We got phase one funding, phase one funding a year ago and then we are on the short, or we're in the how, the budget appropriation bill for phase two fund. Um, and we've given our intent for phase three funding and, and they seem supportive of it. So at this stage, I believe it will all be funded FDACs.
Okay. Very good. I want to thank Representative Payne and our state legislators and senators for supporting this. Uh, this is some, something that's definitely needed in Putnam County and will certainly help us as we move forward. With that, I'd like to move for approval, item F on our agenda, procurement for rank order professional services for design of Putnam County Fairgrounds building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to move to new business. The first item of new business is going to be the animal services building update. Ms. Young.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna have, uh, Mr.
Just a second. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order and, uh, move into item A on the new business, the animal services building update. Brian, is that you, brother?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I think it is. So, I'm just going to introduce, uh, Bart here, and he's going to go through, um, our new, um, animal control facility and kind of give you guys a little bit of insight into that, so if you guys just give him your attention.
Oh, I'm Bart Gass, um, fifty-four Ocean K of St. Augustine. But I'm a general contractor working with the county, uh, to come up with a plan to build a new animal control facility. Just an update, we went through several variations for budget, minimum kennels. And this is what we really came up with. Our goal was seventy, minimum seventy-dollar kennels. We need office area for employees, processing area, cat kennels, and then we had a budget constraint. Uh, so we took that, and really what we ended up with was two kennels, roughly forty-four kennels per building. Uh, and we could take that building and put garage doors on the side so we could open and close it and put circular fans inside to keep the air moving. And, and that way the kennels could be closed off and housed in case of bad weather, or opened up, and we'd keep air moving through there to keep animals comfortable. Uh, so we end up with two of those and keep them separated. And then we also look in, that's just a cutaway of what the inside would look like, with the kennels lined up. Right now, then we came up to the proposed floor plan. You can see this is basically how we'd put the kennels in there to be able to maximize the space. Um, and part of that with that space is for cleaning purposes. We've got troughs, gutters in between the kennels we can wash out and make it easy to clean. Then, let's see, go up here. All right, so we end up with features. We've got two buildings, forty-four kennels per building. We've got garage doors on the sides so they can open up and close it. We've got wall fans. The kennel enclosures, we're going to build them ourselves. We looked at purchasing them and, and finding, so we're going to end up using, you know, um, HDP sides. They can be replaced. They're thick enough, they can't see, they're sturdy, they're easy to clean. Uh, they can be replaced if someone gets damaged. So the kennels will basically be walled with those HDP sheets. I don't know if you're familiar, but they're about half-inch thick. We put a frame around them so they'll be sturdy. Uh, what we had designed for kennels were approximately five by five. I think we've talked to JR and him, we can modify that so some of the kennels are bigger, maybe six by fours. Uh, give them a little bit more square footage. Now, then we go to the office building. The office building, we're looking at around twenty-eight hundred square foot. And looking at the minimal requirements for that is we needed a processing, uh, features. We needed a processing area where we could bring animals in, check them out, process them in. We needed cat kennels, we needed storage areas, and we needed a, basically a playroom if somebody wanted to come in there and spend time with an animal they want to adopt. And then office area, allowing for one private office, assigned cubicles for other people in the break room and restrooms. So the minimal requirements, everybody has a place to work. Um, and the ten is we're going to separate that building, the HVAC system, so that the office area is really separate from the processing area. So, uh, floor plan is pretty light. But that's, that's the basic floor plan. That can be modified some, uh, once we get into the real detailed design. The other thing, yeah, yeah. So the layout of the building on here for y'all to be able to see is fairly simple. Once we get on site, those buildings may be set differently arranged for the site depending on what we end up with. Let's see. That's the main entrance to the office building. Based on the budget constraints, we kept this as simple as we could. So, you know, there may be some modifications moving forward, but right now everything was bare basics and very simple. Let's see, that's really, that's about, that's all of it.
Commissioner Adams Act, did you have a question?
I, I like that you said that it's not the way the building's necessarily stacked. I mean, because I think we got taken the airflow and things like that, and the wind direction, all that kind of stuff. But you kind of covered that without covering it by saying that's not necessarily the alignment. My question is, with the HDP panels, how do we get ventilation to the individual kennels? If they're, the sides are hard and...
They're open on the, they're open on the end, and we actually thought about that some. You're going to have air moving over them. You'll have air being pushed down the hallways in between them being pulled through. And the kennel doors are, they're going to be chain link, regular doors.
Right.
So you'll have some air movement through there. They may not be directly a fan blowing on them. Um, there's also, if we need to, there's an option. I'm looking at wall fans on the end, so we open the doors, it pulls air through there. There's a possibility you can come on the other end and mount some ceiling fans that actually push the air down across it. It's, it's just, uh, the goal is to keep air moving around that.
And then there's no, there's nowhere for the dogs to get outside either?
Well, the, the, the people that work there, the people, they can take them outside and walk them.
Right. I, I think part of the goal, in my mind anyhow, was to create a situation that lessened the labor burden on the middle staff that we have, so they could be spending more time out in the county addressing issues with dogs that are loose, things like that, and less time. You know, if you have eighty-eight dogs and you're going to have two people all day walking eighty-eight dogs if that's, if they have no means to get outside.
Well, can I, can I help for just a minute?
Sure.
In order to keep, um, the contractor's budget as efficient as we could, we, um, staffed through the negotiation process. We negotiated out the, um, cross fencing or play yard fencing that will be part of the overall design. So we'll take the burden of fencing play yards, um, for the animals, just as we have today. Uh, shelter attendant staff will move animal or animals if they are socially adapt into the play yard so that they can play while kennels are cleaned. Um, but that's not something we wanted to pass through cost to be on the contractor for.
Yeah, but I, I think that's, in my opinion, that's a little bit of bad hindsight because if we make it so the dogs can get outside without that, that, that's long-term. The labor burden saves us more than what the cost of it probably would be. I mean, I don't know if we can do an analysis of that, but to me that would seem like they had a place to go where you could...
We looked at guillotine doors, which would essentially what you're talking about.
Right.
But the cost of the project would have substantial impact, and it, it, we'll take whatever direction the board wants to go.
But I think that the cost impact could be outweighed by the labor impact costs. So see, we're talking about later in this meeting going to fifteen dollars an hour across the board, um, of, you know, eight hours a day of at least one person moving the dogs in and out and whatever. That, that adds up after a couple of years. That could be saved by planning for that and having it and adding some budget to it. Um, in my opinion, that, that may save us in, after five or six years and probably break even. It's kind of like, you know, going to solar or something, right? People, there's a, there's a break even point that happens. Just something that was in the original plans that I, I think was important because it was a labor-saving thing long-term, and it benefited the county and the animals long-term. My other concern, and I guess there's not much we can do about it, but my other concern is where do we isolate a dog or, or animal? I don't see any, there was some kennels that were made for isolation in case of an animal was sick or if an animal was, you know, aggressive, things like that. I don't see that in here either.
We would handle it the same way we currently handle it. There would be a designated area of quarantine, um, just like there are currently. So we have a designated area of quarantine currently. There would be a designated area of quarantine within the kennel layout. It would not be in the middle section, obviously.
So you just put them in a different kennel? I don't know.
You, well, so essentially you're sectioning them off. Quarantine animals, if they're aggressive, have a little bit different requirements on what the structure of the kennel has to contain. Um, so we would have specific ones for that. Um, and, and then they would be in a specific section, just like they are in a vet's office or an animal humane society or, or anything else.
Mr. Harvey, I believe you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, labor burden is not so much of a concern of mine because, correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about the Sheriff's Department, the Vet Tech program. Talk, that's kind of why the building is going to be put out there, not the only reason. That's what the sites collect, selection committee did, so it's a win-win for us.
Before you run him off, Brian, I've got a very important question directly for him. If you, you're, you're going about operations, right?
You go ahead and, and I'll come back.
How much?
Um...
Ball, ballpark. I mean, I understand you're in the design phases of a design-build project, but you should have in by this point in your mind approximately a...
A range or something.
Yeah, a range or where you think about you're going to be. I'm not trying to get a hard bid from you today.
Well, but he's going to be next tomorrow, won't it? You're looking at the kennels in the office building, not counting site work. We're looking around eight-eighty to eight-ninety.
Hey, thank you. Made him a date. Now you can sit down. Get him to, hey, get it, get him to sign something, Brian, on his way sitting down. Thank you, Bart. Sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, no, Mr. Chairman, that's quite all right. So labor burden is not that big of a concern. Plus, I believe, uh, what I've been hearing and what the community's been talking about is once we build a new facility, we're going to see volunteers coming in that we didn't get before because of the conditions of where the animals are at. I'm going to say this, people might throw stones at me, that's okay. I wish we weren't in the animal business, and I applaud our staff for all the hard work they did. I wish our citizens took responsibility for their animals, and it wasn't put on the back of the taxpayer. If you, but that's, I'm going to leave it alone like that. But I applaud this. We've been working on animal services building since I got here. It's been in the budget. It's been sitting in better place plan money. We've gotten some appropriations or hopefully, you know, so things are going to happen here. We're going to have a great facility. We're going to have a win-win situation with the Sheriff's Department and volunteer labor. I am so excited that we're finally bringing this plane in for a landing, and I want to congratulate staff for all the hard work you've done, and I appreciate this going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I have an additional question for the gentleman, too.
It's not your turn.
Oh, sorry. I thought the lights weren't working.
Yeah, they're not working.
My, my lights aren't working.
I'm just, I'm just looking for a timeframe. What kind of timeframe are we looking for completion? Yeah.
Just bring the chair up, Bart.
Let's see, timeframe, I'd estimate from the time we get the contract in place to start design, it'd probably take us about a month to six weeks to get through a, approved design. And then once we start construction, I expect it to be somewhere between six to seven months, depending on weather. I mean, and what we can get done. We should be able to move very quickly with these buildings. Um, so, say, nine months total?
Okay. All right.
I, I guess my question would be not for you, Bart, but for staff here. Uh, but you can keep walking back and forth if you want, if you want to, or you could just... Where are we at on starting?
Yes, so today was our, basically bring to the board and tell you we have a conceptual design that we, we believe is an eight-eighty, um, number. And if we get consensus from the board, we don't need an official vote because this is a consensus item, we'll get a formal contract from Mr. Bart, um, and his company for what you see before you, and we'll then be able to bring that to the Board of County Commissioners for execution. And then we're started.
All right, so basically, Commissioner, my lights up here aren't working today, so you're just going to have to kind of raise your hand or call out or something like old times. So, basically, if you get a consent today, you'll get a, a contract from him. And I want to point out the fact that in order to help save money here, we, that a JR has consented to try to do some of the site work on staff, and so the site work is not included in this project. Uh, and it shouldn't further impact the budget cost because, uh, public works is going to try and do as much of the site work in-house as they can.
We'll have some budget, um, impact because obviously we have to buy fencing, and there will be some things. But, but we still believe it's more efficient for us to own or direct purchase those items than it is to run it through the contract.
Fair enough.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Adams Act.
So one other thing on the building design is how modular are these buildings as far as if we decide we need more room, um, more kennels?
Oh, well, the, it, the kennel buildings are modular. You put a new, whole new building, more kennels. Uh, I mean, you can do a block building, each of those buildings, you can just build a third one for the kennels. Uh, the way they're built, you can actually go on and add to them for the kennels. I mean, it's, 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 it's a, it's a barn. And, you know, we can extend it out longer, or if you go out and just put a completely new one in, you got another forty-four kennels.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Chairman Turner? Yeah, that's it. So it's a barn, correct? Like a superstructure, and so you got the garage door just to close it up for bad weather at night, and you open it back up, and all the kennels are just modular in there, correct?
Correct.
You can build different-sized kennels?
Yes.
In there, okay.
Now, one thing with that, with the custom kennels, we need to stick to certain sizes because that HDP is expensive, and I had to buy, buy a sheet. So, cost-wise, I need to be efficient with the material per square foot as I can be. So, you know, we, we have, have general sizes we can use. We can do custom sizes, but they just cost more per kennel.
Yeah, we, we'd like to steer away from that if we could. Uh, I wasn't being smart.
No, no.
You're right. Being efficient with your materials is half of what this is about. Okay, so what we need today is your consensus from the board to move forward with this project, with this conception.
Yes, sir.
Raise your hand or wave.
Raise, raise your hand if you're in agreement with moving forward with conception. Okay, looks like you got four to one.
Okay. We'll bring back a formal, uh, contract, uh, for the board to award, hopefully at the next meeting, if, if Mr. Bart can get me a contract that quick.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bart, for coming today. I believe we have another discussion from Julie Ann over...
Yes, sir, Commissioners.
Uh, operations side.
While we're talking about animal control, um, we've done a lot of analysis out there. And an immediate need that I'm going to ask the board to grant me today is frankly staffing. They are understaffed for the amount of demand that is currently on the facility. My, my request today is for two additional officers and one additional administrative dispatcher. The number of calls coming in right now, the demand is simply, um, far greater than what the current employee staffing resource can handle. So I do not need budget dollars. We have enough. It will not impact the budget. But the board sets FTE, my employee counts, and so I'm, am asking for three additional staff members, two of them being officers, one of them being a dispatcher.
I move approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Under discussion, I'd just like to say that everybody should understand this is only the first step in many changes that we're trying to make to operation. the first step in many changes that we're trying to make to operations at the Animal Services Facility. So with that being said...
Mr. Chairman, I had a comment on that also when my conversation was Julianne and she moved into animal control and we have Brian knew that they've had enough time, Julianne's had enough time to identify a need, a specific need, and go ahead and make a recommendation. It's on us to either go with it or not, but they've done their job and done their research or so. It's just a positive move forward in the right direction because a new facility is not going to cure everything at all. It will hopefully make it a little nicer for people to volunteer, to donate items to want to adopt out there, but we still, you know, need more enforcement mechanisms and this is a step in the right direction, so thank you.
Mr. Wilkinson.
I just want to comment and say that I think Kathy Tillman and her staff out at the animal control has done a phenomenal job with what they have been dealt with. And I asked her to pull some numbers for me and I just want to share them real quick. For the first four months of the year, we had, in January, we had three hundred and thirty-four calls. We are now at, the last count in April was like around, March, I'm sorry, March was four hundred and forty-six calls. That's an increase of thirty-two and a half percent just in calls alone. In our cases, in January was a hundred and thirty-nine and then we've been as high in March as two hundred and nine, so that's another thirty-something percent increase. So it's certainly warranted that we add these staff members to that facility and I'm glad to see that we're getting that facility completed and that we have a timeframe and a plan moving forward. And, you know, in addition to that, I think our community has a perception that our animals are just sitting out at animal control and they're not being moved and that's just not the case. And we're also running some numbers. For example, we have adopted out a total of about fifty animals for the first few months in the year and we have had rescues well over around three hundred and thirty-one and which have gone out to other facilities. So, you know, while people think that, you know, the same animals were being, sitting there, have been sitting there because we're a no-kill shelter, isn't really the case. The case is the staff is doing everything they can to adopt these animals out. They're working on the weekends, they're out at Tractor Supply if you haven't seen them, they're at Pet Sense, they're working with rescues, they call rescues all the time to come and pull animals so that those rescues can work on adoptions. And I just want to say to Kathy and her staff, great job. You are moving, you're doing your job and we appreciate it as far as, you know, getting animals adopted and rescued. And I appreciate Julianne, the direction that you're taking us. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, if there's no other comments, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. With that, that was all you had with Animal Services?
Yes, sir, today.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to item B. In the, I think they're just asking for a small easement down one side to run another transmission line or whatever. We checked with Jay and he said there'd be no impact in the area of the landfill, which is where this is at. So unless there's any questions, the chair will entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
When we do these type of, you know, I view this as it's an asset to the county, obviously, the land and the fact that they're going to put an easement across it. And I guess typically we don't ask for compensation for that. Is there a reason why we don't ask for compensation? I know, you know, the comment was made that it's minimal, but what is minimal? I mean, we could use ten thousand dollars to add to something else in the budget. So, I mean, why is it that we don't really particularly ask for anything for, you know, money in return for giving up a county asset? I know we're not giving it up, we still own the underlying fee of the land.
It's running right down an existing power line anyhow, isn't it? Jay, you want to come forward? I don't know that he can answer your conceptual question or whether we start charging for easements. But if we're going to charge for clay electric for an easement on a power line, then we probably need to start charging for any easements we do anywhere else, too.
And I don't necessarily know that charging is the right word as long as we're offsetting it with some kind of exchange that in the future, if we have a need, that they're going to work with us, so.
We have on certain instances, Commissioner Wilkinson, actually got something in return, like when the gas pipeline that went to Seminole was the feeder there, we actually had them put in a tap. That if we ever were able to take our landfill and make it into CNG, compressed natural gas, something that we could sell back to the pipeline, we actually have a tap in place and that was a condition to get that easement. However, I don't know that we look at every one of them on an individual basis and put some monetary or some asset value to them. In the case of the one that's in front of you today, it's on the far northern strip of our west property and it's right, butts up right the northeast environmental side and what it is, is they can't put the power line right there on, in the landfill, it'd be in the landfill road for northeast environmental. So they're coming right on the edge of our property right there and it's really something, if we were able, like for building a borrow pit and everything like that, we have to have an offset from their landfill anyway. So it's a piece of property that we have being on that far northern strip that I don't know that we'll ever use, I guess is what I'm telling you.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's exactly what I needed to hear.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else?
Any other questions? The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept and authorize you, the chairman, to execute the right-of-way easement.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Item C, this is the People One Healthcare Clinic Discussion. Ms. Young?
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman. The insurance committee, which is comprised of all of our constitutions as well as the board, has been meeting for months about various initiatives that we can take to reduce the impact of the insurance claims cost to our group and countywide. We've seen over the past few years, which everyone has, a rise in insurance costs being exponential. One of the items we've looked at is an in-house clinic. We've explored numerous options related to it. Mr. Suggs, Mr. Grimes, Ms. Corone and I went down to visit a in-house clinic run by People First for the Osceola School Board and it had great success for them in not only reducing the claims expenditure, but also enhancing their population's health and wellness. So in speaking with them, they're very interested in coming to Putnam County for a community-based program. The way the program would work is there would be a membership fee and then the members covered by Blue Cross who opted in, our county healthcare policy, would have access to the clinic with no copays, no coinsurance, no deductibles. And they would do a range of what I would tell you was primary care plus a little, so mental and behavioral health, lab testing, in-office labs, some basic pharmacy and pharmacy guidance. They have nutritionists for diet and they have care guidance and navigation if you need services beyond their level of care. So they essentially come into our community and make contract with local providers who do ancillary services to what they're already doing. So we have talked to them, we believe it's a great access to, for both our, again, cost reduction as well as employee well-being. One of our group's largest problems is compliance with their programs. So if you are supposed to be on diabetes medication, our claims reports continue to tell us that they're not taking it as they should or they're not taking the correct drug. So the insurance committee met and reviewed the proposal before you. There are three options on the table. The insurance committee unanimously recommended option three, which essentially brings no risk to the county. We're going to advance a seventy-eight thousand dollar payment, which is essentially month one of the services. And then they would, the People One, would work with community partners to continue to build the engagement to a level that sustains their operation. And then when they go live, we would then get the first month's payment off and then we would continue to pay. If for some reason they don't go live, that those dollars would be refunded to the county. So again, no risk proposition. And the quality is very, very good. We spoke to and saw frankly numerous people in Osceola who gave stories or testimony of their healthcare needs being off track and simply gaining access, convenient access to having a quality medical provider allowed them to get their health back on track, which prohibits those high-dollar claims or at least curbs them. If we can treat hypertension on day one rather than day three hundred, then we're a lot better. The outcome for the individual is a lot better and the claims result is a lot better as well. So that's the goal of the program.
So basically, it all boils down to better healthcare and less money for the insurance to us. That's what it all boils down to.
Yes, sir. The projections that they've run is that in the first year, we will net a savings even with the cost of the membership.
And there's no risk for us because basically we get the money back. So, Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to give some personal stories and I think option three is wonderful. I want to thank Clay and the insurance committee for the hard work. We have kicked this around for years. We tried to get local providers to kind of do this. Didn't work out, we tried our own way, that didn't work out. But I wanted to give you some personal stories. Back a few years ago, I had to have neck surgery and an MRI was required and I was able to do it locally for a lot less money. I could have just said, okay, I'll be in Gainesville, I'll do it over there and get that done, but it would have cost our insurance plan a lot more. So I believe the, this situation's going to help that. The other thing I want to say is I take asthma medicine every morning and I breathe in this inhaler and if I was to buy it locally, it's two hundred and twenty dollars retail locally a month. No, every two months, I'm sorry. My doctor, local doctor, said, why don't you get it from Canada? I said, really, we can do that? Yeah, you can do that. I can get a six-month supply for about a hundred and ten dollars from Canada, okay? That's important to know. I wouldn't have known that had I not sat down with my doctor and said, this two hundred and ten every two months is killing me. What can we do to offset that? So I believe us having not a gatekeeper, and I want to make that very clear, not a gatekeeper, but a partner in our healthcare business to help our employees save money and help our county save money is going to be a win-win proposition for this county where you can sit down with medically trained people and have those conversations one-on-one that can help you reduce costs, help us reduce costs, and everybody wins at that point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so I think, I don't want to muddy the water and so I want to keep these separate, but the People One issue is what we need to vote on today. Can we move forward at the recommendation with the recommendation of the insurance committee? So the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the insurance committee's recommendation and accept option three.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
I'm on a roll today, so I didn't want to stop, you know?
It's all right.
Could you talk about how this would impact our local providers? Because obviously, Putnam County, you know, we seem to feel like we don't have enough doctors here, so I don't want to take, I don't want to take from them. Can you, do you have any thoughts on that?
So, two thoughts, well, first, members are not required to use ours. In lieu of not having a medical provider, we believe ours is going to be better. Now, at some point in the time, they may like ours better than their own provider, but right now, our local providers are overbooked as it is. They can't fit you in. Many people are turning to urgent care and/or the emergency room for primary care needs. We did an analysis in the insurance committee and in the first, I believe, quarter, we had an emergency room visit every single day by a member covered under our plan.
Wow.
Now essentially, that is a four or five times higher cost claim than if that individual had a provider that they could go see. So it isn't that I would steal them from their provider, it's that I would curb the use of a non-needed access, right? And the emergency room doesn't want you in there either if you don't have an emergent need. So it's a win-win in that particular case. For other specialty providers, this group wants to contract with them. So they will be reaching out to providers in our area to determine if they'd like to be part of the solution with them. And the provider will have an opportunity to do that. So for things like x-rays and radiology, they'll reach out to the local imaging entities and find out if they want to contract with us. They'll negotiate the rates just like a network does if you're, have an insurance carrier. Things like physical therapy, cardiology, all of those access that we have locally, those people will be brought in and asked, do they want to have a contract? As we grow, so can our contracts grow. So in Osceola, they've expanded to ophthalmology, chiropractic, physical therapy, several other disciplines that weren't there on day one as part of primary care. And what they've done, essentially done that. They've contracted with those local providers and said, would you like an opportunity to be part of this group? If the provider wants it, they have room in their day for the extra clientele, great. If they don't, then that's okay, we'll source it elsewhere. So I don't believe you're going to see a large impact to your local providers.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Julianne, I really appreciate that answer because that was one of my concerns as well, but I talked to a couple of providers and I actually spoke to a couple of businesses that do similar thing, not necessarily Osceola. But the impact is exactly like she said from everything that I've heard, is basically it augments the local providers and in many ways it helps the local providers because it takes some load off of them as well as gives them some potential avenues of business that's more controlled, right? Instead of just having a random person coming off the street and trying to get help and that would normally go to the, give someone that's referred and that sets up that relationship. And it also brings in some additional, potentially brings in some additional resources that aren't in the county today, some new doctors, some new clinicians, dieticians, whatever ends up it expands to and again furthers what's for the community. I'm not normally for government funding this type of thing, but in this case, because it's an effort for us to save the government money and save the taxpayers' money, which happens to have additional benefits to the community, I'm all for this because it's not like government-sponsored healthcare per se. It's basically just allowing new providers in to help service our people in a more cost-effective way and then it does help the rest of the community, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. We're going to move down to item D for an impact fee study. I recommend that we just, in the light of time, we just go on and authorize the chairman to sign a resolution, extend the moratorium for another year or any discussion?
I want, yes.
One caveat to that, sir, and I apologize, Chairman. It is an ordinance that does require a ten-day advertisement, so staff is looking for you to authorize us to bring you back the ordinance at the next meeting. Okay, it would be at a public hearing then for the ordinance. So today's item is to get direction from you all favorably for that and the part B.
Okay, Commissioner Wilkinson.
I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to engage on a feasibility study. Is that what, is that what this?
Well, y'all would have to tell us, the board would have to direct staff if you want a feasibility study to be reviewed, looked into, engaged.
So as the newest commissioner here, I was a little disappointed to know that basically I didn't have a choice in, as to whether we could discuss impact fees because we have to pretty much move forward with this and with the moratorium and because there's not an existing feasibility study on hand. And so I don't want to be in the situation next year where we have to, again, do the moratorium because we don't have a feasibility study. So I would like to allow staff to engage in getting a feasibility study to be able to consider impact fees in the future.
Okay, Commissioner Adams.
We need a feasibility study to open up the conversation, not...
No.
Not having a moratorium. Two different items.
It's a process to develop a methodology to make sure that impact fees are apportioned fairly based upon the impact to the county. The moratorium is moving along as a separate issue, but we're talking about them together.
But we could, in fact, get rid of the moratorium without a study and go back to what it was prior, is that not correct?
I mean, I guess you could. I would not be comfortable to have to defend the county in a position that that's a fair apportionment of those fees.
Based on the changes since two thousand and six or whenever they... Okay. I, I'm with you a hundred percent on that.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we do need to go forward today with that, but I'm also in agreement. I think, I think as we know more, we do better and I do believe we need to have a current study. So I think it is two separate items and I think today maybe or whenever you're ready... And I think today, maybe, or whenever you're ready to have that discussion, that we need to look at, have that discussion as a board of getting a new study and helping out the areas of our county that are impacted. But I support this ordinance.
I personally feel we need to move the moratorium forward today and then let staff, and then let staff work between now and before this time next year, where we have it in place ahead of now, have a impact fee study done. It's not really saying that we're going to take them or whatever, but it gives us an idea of what's going on and gives us just additional information.
So do we need, would we need a motion to have a study done?
We wouldn't have to have a motion to have a study done, but I think that as part of a motion, it would be fine if we used a motion to extend the moratorium for the impact or to extend the moratorium and to implement an impact study for early next year to be completed by early next year.
We really just need direction. Do you want us to put the moratorium on for the next meeting with the advertising requirements as part one?
Yes.
Correction, do you want staff to pursue a feasibility study?
So you want a consensus, not a motion?
It's really a direction, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so basically, it's a consensus issue. Everybody that would like the staff to prepare the documents to further the current moratorium and direct staff to have a impact fee study, raise your hand. It's like it's five to one.
Five to zero.
Oh, excuse me. Five to zero.
I had two hands.
Did you change rules?
Are you sure you didn't have two hands up?
I think, I think I did. Yes, sir. I think I did. It helped you better, I did.
Okay, we're going to move on to item E. The, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Wilkinson if she'd like to take this item because she set it up for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So this is approximately 2.7, 2.8 acres, a property owned by FDOT adjacent to the current Dunn's Creek Bridge. And I know we've been talking about it quite some time to try to get that land. And working with DOT, they had an appraisal done, and of course, they have to be able to receive the appraised value, which is $69,000. And what that would allow us to do is to use that acreage for whatever it is we deem for, whether it's for a public boat ramp or a park or a combination of both. And the other option would include, we either can purchase it outright for $69,000, which is what I would suggest doing, or there's an option to set up a land management plan. But when you do that, then FDOT would have to approve the plan and any changes or additions in the future. And they'd have to write, basically, they have overriding authority over us and what we would do with that land. And so my proposition would be simply that we purchase it outright, and then in the future, we decide how we're going to utilize it best for the citizens.
Well, I haven't been able to talk to you about this since, because we haven't been on television. We certainly can't violate sunshine by discussing this, but I want to hug your neck. I really thought this, I thought this was going to be five to 10 times this amount of money, is what I truly thought it would be. Having DOT agree to let us purchase this property for $69,000 to have a 2.8 acre, hopefully, a boat ramp.
Right.
Then it would be a tremendous asset for the county and in that area. So thank you. Thank you very much for getting that done, and if I could make the motion, I would. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I do want to thank Commissioner Wilkinson and your leadership also in this endeavor. Let me assure you, this Commissioner does not want to enter in any type of agreement with any partner. I want to buy this property and be done with it. Let us do, we've already had that bad taste in our mouth before. Management plans, you know, we say we can do one thing and we can't. Let's move forward, buy this property for $69,000, put it in our inventory for boat ramp or park, whatever we're going to do with the citizens out there. And I also recommend that we take it out of Better Place Plan, the funds.
Is that a motion, sir?
That's a motion to, yes, sir.
Okay, I have a second.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to purchase the property at Dunn's Creek for $69,000. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess, I was good with it until the Better Place Plan part, but I still think we need to use as much of that money as possible for dirt to pave. And any nickel and diming we do taken out of it, I think impacts that. I think I can support if we would take it out of the general fund, but not out of Better Place Plan.
You have a problem with that, Commissioner?
I have no problem out of general fund.
General fund, general fund. Do y'all have a problem with general fund?
I just think we want to.
Chairman, I will amend my motion to take the $69,000 out of general fund reserves.
Second. Okay, we have a motion. I guess we'll deal with amendment first, or I guess I can deal with amendment and the motion at the same time. Same time, okay. So we have an amended motion to pay DOT $69,000 for the Dunn's Creek property and fund it out of general reserves. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have a motion carried unanimously. Just now that we've got that done, I would like to request an agenda item on the parks, on the recs, parks, and rec committee to start discussing possible what we can do with that when it closes.
Yes, sir.
At least fund, if we could just figure out a way that, I don't want to do it without taking it, Commissioner Pickens's committee, but I'd at least like to get somebody on board to design what a boat ramp facility would look like there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Rotary Park. You want to take that one?
Yes, sir.
Would you like me to?
I'm good. Yes, sir. You're welcome to.
No, it's good. You do what you want to do.
Okay. We have, Rotary Park is a baseball field down near on Oak Street or off of Oak Street. It was originally part of the 200 block of Oak Street, and that whole parcel was one block. At some point, the owners were all the same owners. When they divided the property to sell the building off, they added the legal description of what you're seeing closed 8th Street, which used to run through from Oak to Laurel, to the building side and not the ballfield side. All of that was well and good until the property changed hands. And through the survey and abstract title work, it was determined that we have a property line encroachment that essentially the building owns just on the other side of the first base line of that ballfield, to include the press box and the dugouts and the light structures and all of those things. So we became aware of this and began speaking with the owner. And we've reached, there are obviously three different options. We've explored all the options that have been brought to us. One is to forego having a ballfield there, although it is used by a number of youth athletic groups at this time. One is to move the ballfield, which we got some basic cost estimates on that's included in your packet of roughly $200,000 to move it over. Or the third option there is proposed to be a property swap. And of conceptual drawing only included in your board packet because there is a 10-foot walkway separating the two properties on the outside of that outfield fence to allow for field maintenance or fence maintenance of both our field fence and their playground, proposed playground fencing. So with that, staff seeking direction as to which option you'd like us to further explore and engage.
I've been dealing with this for several months, actually, in meetings between staff and the board and, or the staff and the Chair. And this is, I think that the owner of the property is trying hard to come up with a solution that will help his, help his leases of the property, I guess would be the proper word of it, and also not force the county to move the park or shut, or move the ballfield because I don't know that we really have enough room to do it, and it'd be an expense of $200,000. So I think coming up with a solution where it's an even land slot, basically swap, basically foot for foot from where our ballfield is down to the other end on the property, and we're going to have a 10-foot in between us. I think that's the best of both worlds. And so if the board will, what do you need, what do you need today, Julian, to make this go forward in the option that we do the land swap, the piece property with the ballfield? A motion?
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to make a motion that we, the Board of County Commissioners, accept option two, the land swap for Rotary Park.
Second, I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Adams.
So in that land swap, we're still maintaining an area that we can maintain our fence, correct? And use manor, we're?
Correct. There'll be a 10-foot, what we're calling walkway.
That's enough room?
Yes, sir.
We feel? Are they going to, do you think they're going to put up a fence around their playgrounds?
They're saying that they are.
As long as we think that's enough room, I'm fine with it.
Yes, sir.
The reason I'm asking that is because the last drawing that we got from them wasn't exactly like this drawing. And so basically, we're going to give them an offer of the land swap approximately like on this page with the yellow portion of this page right there, with the, with a 10-foot walkway in between.
Yes, sir.
Foot for foot. That's what we're going to offer.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have a motion carries. Okay, next, we're going to move into Project Inverness. Okay, Project Inverness is basically in your packet, I think.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you want to start on that one, Julian?
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to. The Chamber of Commerce, again, reached out to administration with a potential current employer who is looking to expand their operations, estimated to be a $235 million expansion. I do have with me the plant operator today who, I believe, would talk to us a little bit about the good news and what's being proposed. Ms. Debbie is coming up. This is Ms. Masters from Certainty. And so I'm going to let her tell you just a little bit about the project, and then we'll finish with the agreement.
Hi, thanks for having me, and thanks for the support that I've gotten from, you know, the county administrators.
Give your name and address for the record, please.
Debbie Master. I'm the plant manager at the Certainty Gypsum Plant, which is at 886 Highway 17. I've been the plant manager there since 2007. We built the plant back in 2000 under the name Lafarge, and since been sold a few times. And now we operate under Certainty Gypsum. So again, thanks to the chamber and yourselves for considering this grant funding for us. This is a very exciting project. Over $200 million will be spent. It's one of the largest projects that Saint Caban, which is the owner of our entity. We're a subsidiary, and we brand our building products under the name Certainty in North America. It's going to double the capacity of my plant, so we'll be building a second board line. We hope to be in operations producing wallboard there in 2025, so hopefully within 20 months, given the equipment deliveries. It's been under development for a few, several years now. And I'm really excited that we chose the Putnam County operations because it was going back and forth between whether it should be Arkansas or up in Jacksonville. And we decided, the company decided that this was the greatest location for it, given the support we've had from the county administrator and the chamber. And it's going to add over 100 jobs. We have a strong associate population. Some people have been with the company since we built the plant. So we have even hired their children who now have grown up. So we've got a really strong community of good-paying jobs, and we're very excited to be, you know, having this opportunity to double capacity right here in the Placa Plant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. With that, Commissioners, the agreement that has been negotiated is that a five-year incentive, which would be contingent upon job growth on a scalable scale. So year one, there's a certain amount of jobs, and then they grow additional jobs. And then ultimately, they expect to add 107 new jobs cumulative total to the plant. And the repayment or incentive would not exceed 75% of 95% of ad valorem and 50% of 95% of tangible property. All of that to be contingent upon their performance in proving the investment met the 235 or greater and that their job creation met the numbers that they are on target to hit.
Say that last part again. The 95% was on the amount of jobs. The incentives they asked for was for?
Taxes.
Taxes. But it was for taxes for, they asked for 70% for five years, correct?
Well, it was, they asked for a breakdown. They wanted a certain breakdown on the real property, the equipment, and based on their depreciation scale. And then they wanted a certain percent on the real property. So a higher percent on real property, a lesser percent on the equipment based on their depreciation.
So give me the percentages again?
Yes, sir. It's 75% of 95% of the ad valorem, 95%, because that's what we're budgeting. And then 50% of the tangible, the equipment.
Okay, okay. Yeah, 75 and 50, basically.
Correct.
All right. But it's, but it's only, I want to make this crystal clear. It's only on the amount of taxes that will not be paid if they don't come here at all.
Right.
The new taxes, it's not on what they're already paying. It's where if they don't come, we don't get any.
Right.
So that needs to be crystal clear here because somehow we lost that on the GP project. We lost that interpretation somewhere along the way. We only got additional funds on what wouldn't have come here anyhow if we happened to give them the deal. So anyhow, I'm totally for this, but the Chair will certainly entertain a motion. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, plus, Mr. Chairman, along those thoughts, it also is based on jobs, job promotions.
Right. Yes, sir. It is tied to job creation.
So it's a win-win all the way around for this county. And we appreciate our corporate sponsors and our people out there providing jobs for our citizens. And I applaud y'all for doing that. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of this and authorize you, the Chairman, to execute the attached economic development agreement.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'll make one comment. As Ms. Masters said, I feel Putnam County is lucky because they were looking at Arkansas and also Jacksonville to upgrade this facility. So I think it's going to be a win-win, so.
Commissioner Adams.
And when we were first approached about this, and we did our NDAs and all that stuff, you know, one of the things that stood out to me is this is an equipment that only lasts for five years either. So it's equipment that's going to be utilized for a long period of time. And, you know, sure of them picking it up and moving it to another location, which normally doesn't, it has happened in some big production mills, but normally isn't the case. This is providing those jobs, not just for the five years of this particular grant, but for a long timeframe afterwards. And that's the driving thing for me is that it perpetuates. You know, if it was just a one-time, five-years of project and it ended, I would never support it. But this is, you know, an ongoing thing that should perpetuate barring some economic failure or something that none of us want to see for anyone. But, so yeah, all for it. Thank you.
Totally agree. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have a motion carries unanimously.
One last question. Does this mean that we can talk about the companies since?
Yes, sir.
Off the record now.
I don't know that I want to hear from you today.
You already, you already sold.
You already got what you wanted, what you?
I just want to thank you.
Okay, good.
I do want to thank some folks. This project has been in the works for a very long time. For me, it's been 10 months, but I want to thank staff and Mr. Commando, obviously Debbie from the plant. We also worked with one of their site consultants based in Indianapolis, who I talk to like six times a day, which is nice. But I also want to introduce John Freeman from Jax USA Partnership, who initially brought this project to us. So I want, he's with us today, and I just wanted to make sure that he was singled out. And Debbie, obviously, of course, from the plant. But this is a very large project. I learned this morning that it's the, with Saint Caban, you know, they're based in France. This is their largest project in the world.
Wow.
Am I correct with that, Debbie? And this will be one of the-
And this will be one of the top five projects in Florida this year, announced project, so.
Your deal.
I think the cat's out of the bag on whether we can talk about it publicly or not, but...
Over with now.
We can, I believe there's gonna be a press release issued in the next day or so by Certainty Corporate, so then we'll be free and clear, but thanks to everybody, Julianne, Terry, Rich.
Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate all your help, been a lot of work that's went into this project, Dana was working it before I got here, back in August, so she gets a lot of credit as well, so hopefully, we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony soon, and you all will definitely be invited, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, we're gonna move down to agenda, to item H, and we're gonna start talking about the fiscal year '24 budget development.
Can we have a five-minute break, please?
Absolutely, we're gonna take a five-minute break. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order, and I want everybody to know that we're 20 seconds ahead of schedule, so, or a recess, so, and we're gonna move into our '24 budget development discussion. Ready for it, Commissioner Young?
Yes, sir, I'm ready. It is officially fiscal year '24 budget development season, most of you have read the attached agenda, so the, there are three items for today's initial discussion, the first being that the property appraiser sent us our estimate of values on June 1st, again, these are preliminary, so we will get July 1st certified numbers, but these are the ones we start with, so as the Board has directed me to bring you an agenda item, to first set the max millage rate, the Board has also, or, or staff is also bringing you, and Board has made numerous requests individually for some data on personnel impacts and direction, as we recap, and this Administration is recommending the scenario that allows us to finally get our people to 15 an hour or 5%, the state of Florida just passed the 5% adjustment across the Board for state workers, and we are hearing from, from most of our constitutionals, that's their direction as well. We have been able to make some small adjustments over the past three years, but prior to that, we went a long time without being able to make some personnel adjustments, and so we believe that's very important, to continue to support our employees in order to stay competitive in the market, and to retain our valuable workforce. Thirdly, the Constitutional officers have submitted budget requests, they are attached, that, when we have not set budget presentations for the constitutionals yet, as we're waiting on direction from the Board. So, with that, I've had one-on-one meetings with four of the five Commissioners came in to meet and discuss, we've been through multiple scenarios, but I'm happy to answer any questions that may still be remaining.
Okay, let's try to take these, basically, one item at a time.
Yes, sir.
The first, the first one is, is what is, what is the Commission's feelings on a millage rate reduction, leaving the millage rate the same, or a millage rate increase? What is your, what are your comments? Mr. Adams.
Yeah, I, I support a millage rate decrease, I can probably get off of with the, the increase of property values, this year being a little more aggressive than some of the past, off the full trim notice, but I'd like to see us get somewhere between where we are now and, and there, and see where it goes from there.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as much as we'd all like to reduce the millage rate, we have these percentage budgeting working, and, you know, the property appraisers come out with a $400,000 increase that he needs, so I think we can always go from here and go down, but I, I believe in today's conversation, we should be using the millage rate that we currently have, you know, costs are going up, we've had to, we want to, and we have to raise our salaries up, to keep our employees, and, you know, we need to start, and we need to look at what the property appraiser, that $400,000 increase that they're looking at, which is gonna be outside of that percentage, so, you know, what I've learned in this business is there's only one pie, and if I cut you a piece of pie, a larger piece of pie, somebody's gonna get a smaller piece of pie, and who are we gonna cut when that time comes, are we gonna cut the Sheriff's Department, are we gonna cut Animal Services, what are we gonna cut? So, I think for using those numbers today, I think we've got a really good, a good snapshot of what we wanna look at at 9.3099, we can always come down, when the number's true up, but I think this is a good starting place to have the conversation at, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I, well, I agree with what you say. If you don't start reducing millage rate a little bit on good years, you never can do it on bad years. You're, when you have a pie that's bigger, you have larger slices of the pie for everybody, when that pie reduces down to the size of a little pot pie, then there's not, there's no way you can reduce, you can, you can cut the size of the pie anymore. I don't see the harm whatsoever in trying to reduce the millage rate, we were able to do it for two years, we were not able to do it last year, and I think that the money is there, that we could reduce the millage rate this year down to 9.2%, that, I've tried to do the numbers on it the best that I could, and I think that it can be fit in there, and still get the, the things that we have to do, like possibly the, the, try to have a, an increase in the wage rates to the same level that the state is, along with possibly the 15 minimum, which the state has set their rate is 15 minimum, so I think we could fit all that in there, and still do it without, without taking a lot of money away from the existing cut of the pie, and still having a little bit of increase to do, do some other things with. Also, we're gonna have a pretty serious event this year that hasn't been discussed but, but around the edges, but I believe that our healthcare is gonna have to have at least a million-dollar infusion this year. Now, we've been dancing around the edges on it, but I just don't see it happening for less than that, I believe it'll actually be more, so I'm hoping that we can take the money that was, that's returned to us from constitutionals, what if any there is, and put it towards healthcare, along with whatever the Board has to put in, because basically that means that everybody that has employees have actually put into that, to the healthcare issue, now, that's just something that I've lightly been discussing, and has been lightly discussed with me, so I guess the, the first thing that we need to decide, are we gonna try to do any reduction whatsoever? I think that if we reduce taxes a little, the millage rate, a little bit each year, then over a period of time, we can, we'll have, we have a lower millage rate that I think it, most people are seeking. If we don't ever try to do it a little bit, obviously, we can't take the full rollback, it's just, there would, there would be no raises, there would be no health insurance, there would be no anything, I mean, it would just, we can't take it all, but getting to 9.2 is very doable. That's your calculator you're looking at?
I am, yes, sir.
Yep, that's it. So, basically, that still gives us 1, 1.176 on the Board side, it gives the Sheriff's Office 1.774, it gives property appraiser...
No, your numbers are wrong, sorry.
Is that the old calculator, or have you changed them again?
I have to put in the new number in the, in the equation.
I did, I put adjusted millage at 9.2.
Then you're negative.
Okay, I, I can't see his spreadsheet, but I just didn't want you to keep taking those numbers out, because they are not accurate.
Okay, what did I do, I, you said all I had to do was...
Walk around there and tell him what he did wrong, are we using the old calculator that had the wrong numbers in it, or what?
He may be using the one that I built before he got the estimate of values.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
That's the spreadsheet I got from you back.
But that was before he gave us the estimate of numbers.
Did I get a new?
Before the GP Quattro, no, sir, after our meeting, you didn't tell me you needed one, but I can, I...
I would always want a new one.
Well, you are welcome to have my computer and...
Why don't you just plug the right number in for it, Julianne?
Back in the middle, Gene.
Well, with the new numbers, when, with the original numbers that came out, when the first projections came out, but then, then I didn't see us being able to, like you, Commissioner Harvey, I didn't see being able to do that, but then the new numbers came out, and they basically came out at this much of additional funds, o, over what it would have been, Commissioner Adams.
For perspective, what is, what is the trim amount, what's, what's that floor? I don't think we're ever gonna get there.
You were asking trim amount, what are you asking for?
The rate that would be trim, if we went full rollback, proposed.
That number hasn't been calculated, it's a very complex formula that typically DOR calculates for you, it does have some variables in there that account for, or removes, accounting for new construction, as well as a couple of inflationary factors.
What's the difference between the revenues this year and the revenues last year?
$6.2 million.
$6.2 million.
At our same millage, out of $55 million.
Julianne, thank you for sending, I just got it.
Yes, sir.
So, we went to 9.2, what would the amount be?
Of new revenues, 5.5, you're gonna have a loss of $651,000.
So, about 10% of the, the difference? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That kinda explains the same thing I was getting at.
Yes, sir.
Are they up for now, for...
Sure.
Yeah, I have comments. You know, what's important to me is being able to fully staff our departments, giving them good competitive wages, because what I have seen is that hire, train, hire, train, hire, train, and what we should be doing is hire, train, and retain, and the only way to do that is to have decent salaries, and Chair Turner, if, if six, 9.2 gets us to where we are still paying for our staff at the level that's being proposed, at either $15 an hour or 5% increase, and we have the funds to cover the difference of the, I think, was it $600,000 shortage, if we went to 9.2?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess the question I would ask is, where does that $600,000 come from, what are we cutting, who's, are we cutting salaries, are we cutting, you know, are we not buying the supplies we need, I mean, I...
We're not cutting anything, we're not adding additional things to it, it's just like last year, when the Board voted on $13 minimum, plus a 5.37% pay increase, they ended, in order to get that added in there, they actually had to cut some money back, but it didn't come out of, it didn't come out of payroll, additional money went into payroll, it came out of other items in the budget that they did, weren't absolutely necessary.
So, do we know what we're cutting?
Well, we still have 5.5 million we're adding to it.
Well, we also, you know, in today's economy, nobody's paying less than what they did a year ago, everything has gone up, costing goods and services has gone up, you know, and then we have the unfunded mandate from the state for the FRS adjustment, so are we taking that into...
Which wasn't as high as what we thought it was gonna be.
It wasn't, but it's still an increase that we didn't have last year.
I understand that, I think Ms. Young has calculated some of those numbers for us, where the actual increase in the FRS is, and the actual increase in the cost of going to 15 minimum, and using the, the state's lead as a 5, 5% increase, but on top of that, you, you still have additional items that we have to pay for, but the 5.5 million will more than cover, so, you know, the one thing that I've learned, in the little bit of time that I've been a Commissioner, is there's never enough money, I don't care if you maxed out at 10%, there's never enough money. I, I'm of the belief that, that you can't hamper and cripple by any means, but, but if you don't try to start cutting back a little bit as you go, from the additional funds, then you're never gonna be able to cut back. When we first came in here, five and a half years ago, myself, and I think Mr. Suggs was about the same time, but when I first came in here, within a few weeks after... But when I first came in here, within a few weeks after getting here, we had somebody prepare a budget that was a tax increase. And it could have been done differently, and it could have been done better. And it could have been to where they actually took a few things out of it instead of act, instead of putting their wish list in. But, um, you had a, a newer commission. You had a, uh, I think, three, three members on the commission. Were two members, three members, including myself, were brand new. Commissioner Stillwell, before me, who ended up not finishing out his term. Commissioner Stillwell, um, was new that year along with Commissioner Goddard and Commissioner Pickens, as well as me being brand new just weeks before. They didn't have to raise those taxes, but they put us in a position where we had no way not to vote for it. Well, we're not even back to the level that it was when they shoved that tax increase down our throat.
Right.
We're not even back to that level yet. I think they were at nine, uh, what were they? I don't remember the, the millage rate back then, but it was.
Nine point six something.
There was a, there, in, in twenty seventeen, it was at nine point eight eight nine two.
Eight eight nine, yeah.
Well, I, uh, I think trying to back this thing down just a little bit at the time, it's not gonna be tremendous pain, or we're not gonna be, and, but yes, we are cutting money out of it. It's kinda like the, the landfill assessment. I know that you can't cut it in half, and I know that you can't, but it's the citizens' money. I know we have control over it, but it's the citizens' money. You need, if you're making money, you need to give a little bit back as you go along. DuPont-Lucite, they got to pay dividends. They got to pay dividends if they make money. We made money this year, six point two million dollars is what the county made in our, in our, um, operations. I think we should give a little bit of it back to the citizens in way of a, of a tax, of a millage rate decrease. And I think going from nine point three zero nine nine down to nine point two is just not out of line. That's just my opinion. Um, we need to give the citizens back their money unless it's absolutely necessary that we use it. It's not like we stayed even. It's not like it went down like it has before in the past. We went up. So I just wanted to share the wealth with the citizens whose money it is in the first place. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do apologize that I didn't have the numbers, and I do now. So it looks like I think we're gonna be fine, and I, I don't have a problem with that adjusted millage. With the exception that we do have, I mean, if we're gonna, are we gonna have that meeting today? We're gonna set the millage at nine point two? Or are we just gonna use, uh, that number to start negotiating?
Not to exceed, right?
I'm sorry?
That, that, so we're just saying the maximum, correct?
Well, are we setting that today?
Well, I think that the first thing we have to do, last year, we kinda let the, the cart get ahead of the horse. To me, the first decision you have to make is what is your millage rate gonna be? Because that sets everything else up.
I agree.
It sets up everything, it sets up the percentages that the constitutionals are supposed to ask for. Some of them don't, but the, what they're supposed to be asking for. It sets up their percentages, it know, they know how much income's coming in approximately, and, uh, and they can set their budgets. Um, right now, it's been unfair to the constitutionals because they haven't even known for sure how much they're getting because we haven't set the millage rate. And, and also, we need to make sure that the constitutionals understand that some of these numbers that, um, that were originally put out on the street included the money that we give back to Georgia Pacific. You can't count that. You can't count that as, because that's money that we have got to give back to Georgia Pacific. So I think this is our, is this our last ninety five percent year? Do we have, is this our eighty percent year?
Eighty percent.
Okay, so. So eighty percent of the, of the money that Georgia Pacific pays on the additional prop, on the additional stuff, we have to refund them. So do these numbers, do they include that, Julianne?
They do.
So out of the five point five, we've got to give eighty percent back to, uh?
No, sir. Uh, the, you're actually gonna add revenue because you were paying ninety-five percent, and now you're gonna pay eighty-five percent of the GP dollars back. So there's an, um, additional net revenue of about seven hundred thousand dollars, and that is reflected in there, and it's reflected in the constitutional's percentages.
Okay, so the net ref, the, the money's in there for the money that we're gonna get, but we, we have taken the money out that we have to give back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And your number also includes the FRS adjustments? On, for all, all offices or just ours?
Well, no, ma'am. So the, the spreadsheet you're looking at is revenues only. It does not have any impact for the expenses to our constitutional offices or our office for any external, um, expenses. And that's why there's a separate spreadsheet that takes you through that. So we have sat with the sheriff's office and their high-risk employee count, they're looking at roughly one point two million dollars in just FRS impact, which is substantial. So their budget request with any, frankly, reduction in millage would be at a deficit. There would be a delta there. And what the board has to direct us is, for all of those constitutionals as well as those expenses, how do we handle the delta? Where, where, where does it come from?
Okay, so, go ahead. I'm trying to wrap my head around this again. It's, I think the constitutionals and, and not bad mouth of them at all, they're gonna ask for what they feel they need. Whether it's a nine point two millage rate or it's a nine point three millage rate. And they're even looking up here at the five of us to come up with that money. If I'm incorrect, somebody needs to correct me. I am not for raising at all. And we have been blessed because that was a tough first, but they've all been tough, and this one's, is no exception. Um, the last few years, I believe, some of the returns have been asked for back.
Yes, sir.
So we can't count on that.
You can if you decide you're not gonna give it back, but you're gonna use it for healthcare.
We've had some initial estimates, and we don't believe there will be that return this year.
Okay, so with this conversation, I would love to lower it, there's no question. The dollar amount that I saw per homestead, I guess, of hundred thousand dollar value, what was that, Julianne?
Um, at the nine point two up for discussion, if your assessed value is a hundred thousand, that'd be after your homestead and everything, you would save ten dollars and ninety-nine cents a year.
Okay, so, so if we did that, um, that would be, you know, doing what a conservative commissioner wants to do. But also, trying to dig ourself out of this hole has not been the easiest thing in the world. Of trying to get to the fifteen dollars an hour.
Right.
Trying to retain people. Trying to, um, you know, uh, you know, buy new equipment and things like that. So, um, I s, I see where Chairman Turner and Commissioner Adamsack are coming from. But, so, working from the nine three that we're at?
Yes, sir.
Back, enlighten me some more on why that's not a good thing to do.
I don't understand the question.
Of, to set it at what we, leave it at what we have, okay? Knowing that we can always lower it as we move further in this process.
But it's hard to say that you're gonna lower it when you move further in the process when all your initial con, uh, calculations were made with that amount of money. So you've almost got to set your millage rate right up front of what you're at least looking at. It always says you can still go down. We could still go up later on even because we don't have to set the millage rate in stone today. But if, if we are, if we're gonna come down, or not, whatever y'all decide to do, but if we're gonna come down, we've almost got to give everybody the idea that we're gonna come down today where all the calculations moving forward could be done off the numbers as they come in and they get, the projections become more solidified. What, how much money everybody's supposed to get on their, on their percentages that, that by the way, I think worked real well last year with the exception of a, one little blurb or two. That should be the first thing the board does. They should set the millage rate. This is what we've got on our mind. And then the next thing the board should do is, is, um, is bring in the certain things that they want funded, such as employees. Last year, we skipped the millage rate part, we just went straight into the employees. We did the thirteen min, the thirteen minimum, we did the five point three seven percent, and that's what the budget revolved around was the, was the minimum and the employees, and the raises for the employees, and it, uh, a, uh, a millage rate was never even discussed. Well, I think that the first decision needs to be made is for commissioners to vote yes or no on whether you wanna reduce the tack, the millage rate in taxes on a year that, that are projected six point two million dollars in additional revenue has been projected. I just.
Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Adamsack?
So, I really appreciate this conversation. I would, I would say a conservative commissioner would go for a tax decrease, which I anticipate the trim notice is gonna be somewhere between eight point three and eight point five, from my math. And, um, it'll be in there. So, a conservative commissioner, which is where I've stood the last two years, would say eight point three. Now, I understand that the atmosphere is a little different in this particular season because we don't know what in the world's gonna happen with the economy. So as, and I don't like to use the word conservative anymore either because there is a conservative party in the state of Florida now officially. So, um, so as a, as someone who takes a conservative economic approach and considering the, the outcomes, I was thinking more in the eight point nine 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 area and then trying to get to eight point five or something in the future here. My frustration in, in the, the two budgets that I've been involved with is, it's, I feel like we're, we talk about spending the money instead of budgeting the money here and figuring out where to, where to make cuts. You do have to talk about making cuts if you're gonna do things. And, um, there's always somewhere to cut that's reasonable in, in every budget in the world, whether it's your house, or your family, or your church, or, or something. There's always somewhere where something isn't as important as other things. Whether it's, it's gonna hurt somebody somewhere, no matter what you, when you cut, but that's, that's, that's how it works. And that's life, that's life for all of us, when our personal homes and our businesses and anything that we partake in, whether it's going on vacation and, and cutting your budget for your vacation in a certain year because things aren't as good, or the economy doesn't look as potentially beneficial in the future. So that's where I would have to be this year, and that's from the math that I personally did. And, uh, but I, I do appreciate the conversation. This is further than we've gone with the conversation in the prior two years I've been involved in as far as cutting, so, thank you.
When I first started this conversation with our budget officer a while back, that's exactly the number I used was eight point nine nine. I wanted to get under nine, that was my goal. I just truly don't see how we can do it. And the reason being, if we, if we end up giving an employee raise, which I think we're gonna have to remain anyway whatsoever competitive, we, we gonna, we've got to keep our health insurance good. I think with what we did today, that's gonna be a positive step in the right direction, but it's only gonna be one step in the right direction. On top of that, the, uh, insurance committee, Mr. Davis, thank you for being with us today, has got some serious work to do on trying to make incentives and move people and try to get them to do what we need them to do to make the plan better. And they've been really discussing some good ideas, but we've been overwhelmed the last meeting or two with discussions about other specific issues. So I'm hoping in the not-too-distant future that, uh, Chairman Davis can call on the insurance committee meeting and we can start to sc, uh, that will revolve around just that issue, trying to, to get us there, to, uh, try to help us with cost savings by incising employees to do things that are good for the employees, but also good for the county. So with all that being said, and the expenses that we've got, the additional expenses that we've got this year that we cannot do anything about, cannot, then I just don't see how we can get down under nine point two. I wish we could. I wish we could take the whole rollback and go all the way back to eight point five. I really do, but we just can't get there. If we do, we're gonna put everybody in a bind. We're gonna put the county back to where we can't retain employees, they're gonna go somewhere else. We won't be able to fund our health insurance system because that's gonna be a million dollars. I just believe it. And, and I'm being, I'm making a projection on the million dollars, but if I had to, to, uh, if I had to bet a nickel on it right now, I'd bet you I'm low, not high. And you wanna say something, Julianne?
I do, Chairman, for, um, for conversation as your, as your budget officer, I guess, while we've had this conversation a number of times and, and I'm always willing to try to help you get where you want to be. This year more than ever, our departments have seen operational cost increase that just haven't been what we projected. Now, in, we've had a few instances where they were under, so fuel's one of them, and we've had that conversation. So we were able to shuffle some dollars. But at nine point three oh nine nine, while six point two million dollars sounds like a ton of money, the board's operational cut of that is only one point nine million dollars. When you're talking about staff increases of one point two and additional external agencies that have already got in-house of a million dollars, the board's already in the hole before we even ask a department head if they have an increase in expense. So while I understand the pie looks and sounds really cool, the, the, when you get down to the details of having to fund the sheriff's office, the clerk's office, who also is experiencing all of those same increases, the supervisor of elections has to move his poll workers, and he's got two elections coming up. So all of these constitutional officers and the board is facing the same dynamic. So while I'd love to tell you there's extra dollars and it's, and it's, and it's reassuring that we did see the growth we had, because I don't know what we would have done had we not. I don't want the conversation to be lost, or I'm irresponsible in my duties if we lose the conversation, that even at today's numbers, there's not a lot left for the department heads who are operating county departments to come in and say, this is a problem. We have been, since I have been here, and I watched Mr. Reynolds to do it before I was here, line by line, on every single budget item. And where there was a year they ended with more money than, than what we thought was budgeted, we cut it. There wasn't a whole lot of negotiation in that. So department heads have been asked year over year over year to give me, there were some days I asked for two hundred dollars, because if I could find two hundred dollars to put back to right the ship, that's what we took. All of that to say, we've, we've gone through this exercise numerous times and asked department heads to cut, 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 cut. We can do it again, and we're happy to, with board direction on what you'd like to see less funded, where, where we take the cut from. Happy to do the exercise, happy to do it all. But I don't wanna lose sight of those, those caveats that are going to be major burdens on this year's budget cycle.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I kinda misspoke, and I wanna apologize to the property appraiser. My numbers, I was using the old ones. So it looks to me like, from what we talked about, if you use the percentages that we have, you're still asking for about two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars more than what the allocation would be. Everybody else seems to be coming in line to those numbers. So, Ms. Ms. Young, you're kinda right. I mean, where do we come up if we hold true to that number? And I'm sure they've already submitted their budget or, or to the state of Florida.
They have submitted it to DOR, I've gotten a official notice.
So that would be, if we, if we are obligated to come up with that, that's additional revenues that we have to do. So, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I just did the scratching math on my paper, and I do apologize for that. But, and there might be some return that maybe could offset that, but we're not sure about that. What we're hearing is possibly no. I would love to go back, and, and I would, who wouldn't? Nobody up here doesn't want that to take place. But in reality. But in reality, we've got, we've got, we're on, we're righting the ship, and we're moving in the right direction. And we've kind of been mandated to bring our salaries up and, and F R S happened, and our insurance, and I mean, things are happening out of our control.
Yeah.
And so, what do we do? Do we, do we shut down? Do we shut down? I mean, I say we're right here at the crisp of success, and, and I want to continue that path forward. And if we can get there at nine point two, you got me. If we can get there at nine point two nine, you got me. If we can get there at nine point three, I'm there. But I want to make sure we're staying on course and doing the right thing here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have any comments?
Your twenty-four with fifteen dollars or five percent, which is what I support if we can get there. Um, what does that leave us with as far as, um, my, my just drew a blank, and I had a question in, in line.
Any more coffee? We need a coffee break.
Yeah, I only drink one cup a day. Um, what's the word I'm looking for?
Expenditures, revenues?
No, no, the, the other one.
The other.
External.
The only thing we haven't talked about, which is our reserves, reserves.
Okay.
What does that leave us with reserves at the beginning of next fiscal year?
So, right now, you have roughly thirteen million dollars total in reserves.
And we spent some today, sixty-nine thousand.
You roughly have thirteen million dollars in general fund reserves. That includes your restricted reserves, um, which is, which is about, well, by state statute, you're required about eight, and then the G F O A standards is about ten is where it comes out.
About three million. So, just as my statement's been the last two years, is you don't carry forward a thirteen million dollar reserve. You carry forward a ten million dollar reserve, and that's where you make up the difference. And you actually get to like eight point seven something with that.
But we also haven't had our mid-year true-up yet either. And our mid-year true-up's going to bring additional dollars in revenues that aren't being counted at the present time.
I expect that, yes.
That's, that's why I'm leaving two percentage points off the millage that I'm proposing.
But then what would you propose that gets cut?
And we just use that, we just, we don't just cut any jobs. You have the same exact budget, you just don't carry thirteen million dollars.
If we take general fund dollars, general fund reserves to balance the budget, then you're going to have to identify what departments we're shutting down between this year and next. Because reserves is a savings account, and if you continue to draw from the savings, then there's nothing in it at the end of the day.
Reserves is a saving account that has a required amount in it. We don't have to carry more than the required amount. So, we can utilize, and this is the question I ask every year, can we utilize the amount, other amount for anything that we want that's beyond that?
You should not use it for operational expenditures.
It's not operational expenditure, it's to give it back to the community in, in a tax cut. In the last year and the year before, I was told, yes, that can be done.
If your stipulation is the next year, you're going to raise taxes on the citizen to make up that delta, the deficit.
You wouldn't know next year until you have the numbers from the, from what the properties appraise at. Every year is a one-off, it's.
Sure, but regardless of property appraisers, property appraised values, the next year, you can still expect that your expenses are going to come in at a delta even if your property appraisers.
There is situations where you could raise millage and it'd still be a tax decrease because if the, if the value of properties goes down, you could actually be required to raise taxes, to raise millage rate. I understand that, but we're not in that situation. And I don't think we will be in the foreseeable future here in Putnam County. I think there are some other counties that might be. I don't think here we will be. Um, and I'm pretty confident of that because we're doing a lot of conversion of blank lots to, to housing. And just that alone, it results in a hundred some percent increase, a ninety some percent increase in the assessed value. So, if you go from a three thousand dollar lot to a hundred thousand dollar home, and that's a cheap home, there is no hundred thousand dollar home nowadays, there's people that are buying lots and putting a brand-new mobile home on them, listing it for two hundred thirty thousand dollars. That's a net gain of ninety some percent that keeps happening over and over and over again, which is a net boon. That's where this boon is coming from. It's not coming from my house being assessed at fifty percent more than it was. It's coming from transitioning lots to usable housing. That, that's where it's happening. And we're still going to be, even if the, the downturn happens, we're still going to be a safe haven for people that need affordable housing. And affordable housing, it's, it's, it's a bullshit term, my, in my opinion. Really, it's, it's housing that's cheaper than the surrounding areas is, is what it turns out to be. Because there's people right now getting priced out of housing in Putnam County because affordable for them isn't what's the average for the world. And that's very unfortunate, but that, that's the reality we live in. Um, so that's where our gains are coming from, and those gains aren't going to stop if the housing market takes a downturn here because it's going to kill St. John's County, some of the other counties that have these houses that are sold for six hundred thousand dollars that are the equivalent of what sells here for two hundred forty thousand. Those people who are forced out of housing are going to come somewhere like this, where they can afford to live. Um, so, I'm not worried about that. It's, it's basically what I'm saying, and it's what I've said the last two years.
Well, I, I truly do think we need to fund our budget without reserves, and I think we can do that. We did it last year, and we can do it again this year. We just need to set a realistic budget. Is it easier to fund your budget with the, with all the money you can get, or is it easier to fund your budget with a little less money? I understand that, but I was always raised conservatively, but I've also been, tried to, tried to be a realist too. And the realistic side of this is you've got to have X amount of dollars to try to get your bills paid. Now, that doesn't mean that you have to have your bills paid, push, raise your reserves another little bit too. It doesn't. And the way that I've seen this game working over the last few years is basically, you put the money in, you, at the mid-year true-up, you have an additional money come into your reserves, and then at the end of the year, you have reserves left because nobody's going to spend down to nothing, and we try real hard not to make, not to spend money, reoccurring monies out of our reserves. We've always tried to do that. It's just a bad idea. And so, you know, I, I guess it's good to have this conversation that, that we'd love to do all this, because like I said, at least twice today, I'd love to take the full roll-back all the way down to eight point five, but that's not realistic. That's just not realistic. But giving some of the people's money back to the people is realistic, and I think it's doable here too. Commissioner Adams, Zach, you have something to add to it?
Yeah. We're missing the other half of being conservative is when the people get that money back, especially since in, in this case, like we said, it'd be, if we went to eight point nine, I think it'd be like twenty some dollars for a hundred thousand assessed, maybe it's, it's a little bit less than that, a little more than that, I think like twenty-three something. So, that twenty-three dollars basically becomes income that's spent, and that spent money basically gets regurgitated seven times within a three-month-like cycle, which gets taxed each time that it's utilized. So, you get that money back literally within seven transactions. It comes back to government, whether that's the state government, federal government, local government. Local usually gets like twenty-six percent of it. So, it takes twenty-one transactions around to get it back to us. That happens within a year's timeframe. So, that, that, that's how the other side of the conservative economics works, is that transaction, people don't go and say, oh, I saved twenty-six dollars on my taxes, I'm going to put that in my savings account. They don't even realize they did it, and then the money just gets spent because it's in their checking account. And that, that's literally how most people work. That's all.
Um, we're going to try to move this issue. Um, I do think we need to make, today, we need to advise staff of what we intend the millage rate to be this year. Um, and it doesn't say that we can't move it down or move it up let this date later on, but it gives staff the ability to know how much they're dealing with at this present time. So, I can't make a motion so the chair will entertain one.
I, I have a, I have a question though. It can be moved back up? I've heard that twice during this conversation, so.
You're, you're right in your question. So, what happens is at, at a point in the future, you're going to set the maximum millage rate as to the highest you can go. You can always go down, but up to that point. That is not the conversation you're having today. You're having just preliminary budget direction discussions that are going to eventually lead up to that. So, that's why, right now, yes, right now, it can go up or it can go down.
Okay, so, I'll ask this question. So, if we were to direct staff, is all we're doing, to work on a nine point two, we can see how that nine point two works out across the board?
You can. You would have to direct staff as to when you want that result back. We would reach out to the constitutionals and ask them all if they can cut their budget. We would cut ours and see what we could do, and then tell you where we came in.
Okay, so the constitutionals will have to work on cutting their budgets also.
Sure.
Okay, now, let me ask you a question, another question is, you have prepared what you feel we need, okay, in all our departments? Or have you started that? I guess, will you be able to show the difference of what we're actually going to be doing without not providing, cutting, however you want to do it, if we roll this back, even though we've got this amount of money, and some of the figures you showed me of things that we don't have control over that are so expensive, that it's going to eat a lot of this up? And I hope you understand where I'm coming from, and we see of why we would need to raise it back up, or why we would need to even pull it down a little bit more and still be able to, we can say, live within our means, but still not lose the momentum that I think this board and staff has worked for, for the last five years, of to try to retain people, to pay them a decent wage, to make them want to stay here, and to provide the services that people are looking for. Because when Commissioner Harvey, Commissioner Turner, and I arrived, I believe the B O C C staff, um, public works, they hadn't had a raise in ten years. Ten years, so we're working our way out of that. Now, I understand they're growing too fast, saving too much, not using your money properly. I'm, I'm a hundred percent with Commissioner Turner in these precesses since he got here. Live within your means.
Right.
And I don't think the staff has to be directed on how to do that because I think everybody sitting over here, everybody I've come in contact, has worked diligently to have as lean a budget as we can have and still operate. So, I hope I'm making sense here, that we could move that back up, but I want to, I would like, this commissioner would like to be involved early on with this, one-on-ones of what we actually are going to be doing without to make this cut, to give back this amount of money to the citizens, and um, what do they really want? Do they want this little bit of money back, or they want to see the continued progress that I, that I think we're making here? Okay? So, I'm, I'm okay with the nine two, i- if we have the ability to, if we need to, to go back up or even to go back down.
So, we um, would, to answer your question, yes, we essentially could come back to you, but it is not going to be a scenario where we say, oh, we're going to live without some extra copy paper this year. Most of the board's expenses are in utilities for all offices and all facilities, and we don't have an option not to pay many of those. So, when we get down to the things that we can live without, um, we can buy less material for public works. So, we currently transfer over just under a million dollars from the general fund operations over to public works for their materials, road base, that type of stuff. Um, we could, things that we could live without, we could buy less library books. We could buy less equipment. Uh, we've already reduced down what program participants they pay for in the parks and rec, and then we provide less and less we have every year. Um, but we could buy less. Those are the things that we actually could see some tangible cut on. But most of the expenses we're talking about today are not something that I'm going to have a, an avenue to tangibly cut because they're not something I have any control over. Their utilities, their Medicaid, their, their cadaver transport, that is up sixty percent from what it has been. Why, I can't answer. It's larger than it was for COVID. The medical examiner's office, all of those services that I don't get any authority to cut, nor does it have any direct impact on operations. What are we going to do about health insurance premiums? I, I don't know. Those are the things that you guys, if we want to go through it, we need to set the next meeting as to when we're going to have the conversations of, here's where the deficits are and how do we make them up? And if you're going to go into reserves, then truly you're not operationally balanced for things like the property appraisers deficit, because there's going to be one there. He, you know? So, those are the things that, that, to answer your question, could you see them? Sure, but they're not going to be anything that's going to, um, you know, essentially it's going to be reductions in services. That's where we're at.
Okay. Mister.
I feel like that at the end of the day, um, our citizens want to see good services and good roads and good infrastructure, and I feel like they showed us that whenever they voted for the school board referendum. And, you know, I don't know that a ten dollars, for me, I think I did my taxes, it would have been if, if we went down from nine thirty to nine point three oh to nine point two, that's about a, a thirty-dollar difference for me, I guess, um, on my tax bill and my personal property. Now, I also have commercial property, and that's where a lot of the, majority of our taxes comes from, is through commercial, and we have seen some commercial growth in Putnam County. And while I agree somewhat with what Commissioner Adams, Zach, said as to how we're getting new revenue, some of that is also obviously from the commercial side. And uh, we saw today that we've got some other opportunities coming up. However, at the end of the day, I, I don't want to be the commissioner that gets the call that says, hey, you know, you've got holes in Barden Road, and then I have to say to that, that constituent, you know, I'm sorry, if for ten dollars more a year, we could have, we could have been filling those holes up in, on Barden Road. Um, but since we didn't do that, then now we can't fill up the holes because we don't have the product to fill up the holes. And, and I, listen, I don't want to pay any more taxes than anybody else. It's a necessary evil. Um, and I know this is my first round of being on the budget cycle, and I appreciate the, the conversation. I appreciate the fact that we're all sitting up here having a good conversation. Um, you know, but if you can tell me at nine point two that we can get, that we can provide the goods and services that the citizens expect, we can pay for the healthcare, we can pay for the F R S, we can get our employees when, where they need to be, then I'll, I'll be there with you.
Do you really think you can do that at nine point three where it is now? I'm just telling you.
Yeah, I do. I mean, I, I, I think that it's.
You think you can provide all the services the citizens need at?
I didn't say all the services. I said good services. You know, if I'm wrong, help me. I mean, this is my first rodeo, so help me.
I just believe if we don't raise taxes on, lower taxes on Goodyear, you ain't going to never lower them. I do believe that. The lower our millage rate is, the more income, the more economic development we get in the county, and the more economic development we get in the county, the broader our tax base is.
I agree with that same.
I just can't, I just can't see why, nobody seems to be able to see that except for me. It's just frustrating to me that we don't do our very best to try to reduce millage rate on years that we had a large increase in adware and revenues, because you're not going to do it on years that you have no increase in adware and revenues. You just can't. So, whatever, I'm here, I'm just the chairman, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I do believe.
Commissioner Adams, Zach had his arm up. Commissioner, sorry.
That was my fault.
I guess that I agree with most of what you said, Commissioner and Chairman. Um, I just want to be more aggressive about it than you do, and that, that's fine, we can be different in there. Um, the whole thing with cutting, telling someone that you can't do the road when you have six extra million dollars in reserves is, is a fallacy. You're only required to have six point six million dollars. It's ten percent, which sixty-six million is six point six million, and we're sixteen percent is because some government agency, some, some government analysis said sixteen percent's a good number. And that if you read the documentation of how they came up with sixteen point six percent, it's mostly for oceanfront people that are more likely to be impacted by hurricane. There's actually, they outline how they come up with the sixteen point six percent. There's a big document, multiple pages about it. We should all read it. Um, so sixteen point six probably doesn't apply to Putnam as much because we don't have as much hurricane. Yes, can we get in a hurricane? Absolutely. Can we have impact? Absolutely. But it's, was set at that four coastline places that get huge impacts potentially. Um, and we could potentially get a huge impact with the perfect storm that comes up the river. I get it. Um, so even at sixteen percent, you're still only at eight point something, nine point something million. I don't know the exact numbers, but it's around ten is the easy way of saying that. It's still six million dollars, that if we ran into that situation, we could vote as a commission to utilize some of that six million dollars to put some extra money in to basically get materials because we ran out because we budgeted for a lesser amount this year. So, the idea that we're saying that you can't do it, to me, is a fallacy. It's, it's, it's stopping to have this, and why we want this huge reserve, I have no idea, because we shouldn't be using it. If, we should be budgeting for an amount, and that's the amount we use unless there's something happens that changes the perspective of the budget, which is why I like the buying of the property. Which is why, like, the buying of the property, that's a change in our perspective. We didn't know it was going to be available. We didn't know we were going to be able to get it for sixty-nine thousand. So we took that out of reserves. That's the way I look at it. And I think we're carrying six to ten million dollars that we don't need to carry. And I think that should be given back to the taxpayers because it's their money. And that's where I stand and that's why. Hopefully that gives you a little perspective.
It does, I appreciate that.
What do y'all want to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the spirit of compromise, I think what we need to do today is, and this is just my thought, let's continue the conversation at nine point three zero nine nine and instruct staff to go look at the nine point two, talk to the constitutionals. I can already do some of the math, they're, they're going to be short. And see if they can live within that before we even have that next conversation. They might come back and say, no, I got to have a little more than, than what I projected. And we already know one department does. We already, I can see another one does based on what they've already submitted. So maybe what our goal today is to say, we're not going to raise taxes, we're not going higher than nine point three zero nine nine. We strive to get somewhere between that and nine point two. What can we do? What can our constitutionals do, if anything, to get there? So no one loses services and no one has to be cut. That's, that's my proposal.
I appreciate that conversation, but I know that we, that y'all don't want a motion today, but I don't know how we're going to get there without one. Be honest with you because I don't see a consensus here. I'm not going to vote for over nine point two. And so if, I think that you, this commissioner, preparing a budget over nine point two percent is just a waste of your time. And I think it might give the constitutionals, if they, if they come and ask for additional monies because they just can't make it. But, you know, it aggravates the fire out of me to no end that they say, oh, I can't make it, the sky is falling and I'm just having a bad day and I ain't going to make it till the end of the week. Y'all need to give me more money, but I'm going to give you back four hundred thousand this year at the end of the year. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Just, that's the way it works in the budget process. You know, I'm not even going to bring up the fact that the five constitutionals go and meet somewhere down in a restaurant and decide how much money they're going to get and they have to redo their numbers because they forgot to take the G P money out later on. Now, come on, guys, I understand what's going on here. So it's, they're budgeting what money they seem to think they have available. Not trying to be ugly about it, I'm just saying, I believe everybody can live within nine point two percent. If y'all don't want to go there, then that's fine. I think we're going to have to do it by motion because I don't think you're going to get a consensus. Because I think we have at least three different down here. So unless you two want to go with one of the three down here, we're not going to have even a vote.
You don't have to have a hundred percent consensus, but you're not taking a vote because it's not on the agenda to set max millage today. This is just a preliminary budget conversation. So, and you can have a split kind of direction as to where the board's going. That staff will have to take that information and go forward with that as well.
Okay. Well, I guess in that case, we've discussed it as long as we need to then.
Mr. Chairman. With, so if we go to the nine point two, then just where are we if the nine point two, the B O C side makes it work? They'll make it work, okay? I'm not picking on constitutionals. Y'all were elected to do a job. I was elected to sit up here and do a job. Is, you know they're not going, some of them are not going to come back under the budget in that particular percentage. Then, then where are we? Because we've had that before, okay? I think the percentages have worked well. And then do you not fund them? How's that look? Do you tell them to come and ask for more money at the end of the year? And how does that look back, look like? I want to try to avoid that, that also. And it may be if you come in at three point nine, they're still going to ask for more money.
Have they ever come back and asked for more? No, they come back with, oh, yeah, we made it, we got a hundred grand this year. We were hoping we'd have seven hundred grand for you, but you cut our budget, so now we're only going to give you back a hundred grand.
And then we end up giving some of it, some of it back to them.
Yeah, that's a prerogative of this board, yes.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to look at both scenarios. As Mr. Commando says, we can look at both. We're not, we don't have to build a consensus. This is the first time we've heard of nine point two. Let's build that. Let's see if we can, where we can land. And maybe we can and maybe we can't.
I would agree with that.
So we're building the nine point two with the understanding that we could come back and revisit it?
Let them negotiate between nine point three and nine point two and see where, if there's any landing. There might not be a landing.
I almost wish I'd asked for the eight point nine nine like Commissioner Adams Act did and then maybe we could have fell out of it.
I'm asking for eight point nine nine.
There you go.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Next, we need to.
Chairman, I apologize. I'm not sure what my direction is.
I don't know that I'm sure what your direction is, Ms. Young. I truly don't. That's why I said, did you want to have a motion of some kind? Because clearly we don't have a consensus.
We can't, we can't have, yeah, I want to beat that horse, but the, the, from what I'm understanding is, based on the conversation from the board today is, we want to do all we can to get down from the three point, or to nine point three oh nine nine. And if we can get somewhere around point two, I think that's kind of the landing spot for the commission. I've reached out and talked to all but one of the constitutionals already. I will say that for full disclosure, the chair asked us to do that and we did that. And not knowing where we were going from here today, we got, at least got them down to the percentage base as best we could where we are with the nine point three oh nine nine. We'll be more than happy as staff to go back out and have those conversations with the constitutionals and see where we land with that. But the bottom line, quite frankly, is wherever they fall and they come back in with their budget request, will depend at that point on what the five of you folks do as far as either keeping the millage where it is or lowering it. And then we'll see where we fall with whatever's left over for the B O C C staff, you know?
Now, did that make you any clearer, Ms. Young?
Appreciate it, Chairman.
Now, did that make it clear? I'm being a little facetious.
I got that.
We understand, but, you know.
I don't know what else to say here. I mean, obviously, there's not a clear consensus. I don't know really where to go from here. I know that you'd rather have, I'm sorry, Terry.
That's okay.
I know that you would rather have a, a more concise answer of, you know, budget for nine point two or eight nine nine or eight point five or the full amount of the millage rate. I know you really would, but it doesn't look like I'm going to get that today.
The, the issue I believe that Ms. Young is having, and I can absolutely understand the, the issue and the concerns is that, you know, there's, there's, there's a, a workload associated with putting this budget together that usually takes several, several hours. I want to say hundreds of hours if I'm not mistaken. And lots of nights and weekends of trying to figure this out. She's going into a budget season at this point to where we're not even sure where we're going to end up. And now we're wanting to put multiple budgets together, which is creating an additional workload as well. But the bottom line is if we can't get to the proposed number, so to speak, with our constitutionals, it's coming back to the board anyway. You're going to have a decision to make whether you want to leave it at nine point three oh nine nine or what numbers are you wanting us to take out of our side of the ledger? Because that's the only place to take it at this point. You know, so that's really going to, at that point, determine what we can do not only for our departments, but our staff and our insurances and things like that as well. I mean, I'll have that conversation. I don't think it will take me long to have those conversations. But, you know, but it does create, unfortunately, a larger amount of work for your budget officer who's already behind schedule with, with trying to do the things that we're wanting to do here. And so for that, I just want us to understand the frustration on that side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thug, I appreciate that. And I mentioned this to you the other day and I'll say it publicly. I don't believe that's your job. I don't believe that's y'all's job. We got three constitutional representatives in this room right now. The fourth one is not here. The fifth one doesn't, we don't give budget money for that anyway. So they're hearing us wanting to go from something to something. They, they hear that. They know that. They've pretty much done the math. They probably scribbled on paper. Some of them have already done that. I think it's their responsibility to come and say, we can't cut anymore or we can, one or the other. And let us know what we can do at that point. I don't think it needs to take much more staff time away from the B O C C side. They have, they have their own. They have their own people that do these numbers. This is not foreign to them. So I don't think negotiation needs to be a part on your side. I think it needs to be, we have cut our budget and we've done the best we could and this is where we're at. Or we can trim back and we can help you succeed to get that millage down. That's how I feel about this process. And I think that they can do that. And they're probably, they'll have that answer probably within a few hours. I mean, seriously, of what they can possibly do. So I think the direction is, they, they hear us now. They hear us that we want to try to get down. Help us get there if we can. If they can't, then we know what our marching orders are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I still think it's clear as mud. So, Julie Anne, you, you're just going to have, so if we, we're, obviously, we haven't reached a consensus on starting at nine point two and trying to go up or down from there. Like I said, I would handle this badly today. I should have come in and asked for eight point seven. And then when we got to nine point two, then we might have, could have had a little bit of a compromise for a very small tack, millage rate decrease. So, do you need like a, a number to move forward at this point? Is that what you need, what you're looking for today in this discussion?
Well, the board drives the budget development. Although staff, myself is responsible for doing the work. What I need to know from you all is if you're looking to reduce the millage, when you're looking for the next budget discussion and what that entails. How and when do you want to talk about capital? How and when do you want to talk to these constitutional offices about the impact that it would have if we make a reduction? How and when do you want to hear how the operational departments are going to be impacted or not impacted? And if, and, and whatever that is as a consensus, can we make the numbers, manipulate them enough to fit them in? Sure. Will it work at the end of the day? It will, at a cost. No matter if we start at eight point seven or five point two, it doesn't matter. We, we, I cannot in good faith tell you that it would be wise in any respect to use reserves for operational expenses because at some point, that train meets the headlights above. Outside of that, if you guys want to identify services or areas where we can reduce the level of service that we're providing to the citizens, tell me how to get you where you want to be. And that is what I'm here for.
So what you're asking me to do is set up a workshop every afternoon next week and us write the budget?
If that's what the board so desires.
That's what I'm asking you, is that what you'd like us to do?
I don't personally need a workshop every day next week. However, I, I do need to know, when do you want the information submitted to the constitutionals? Because when we leave this meeting, they're all going to be looking at me to say, okay, what am I supposed to do for you? How are we going to handle insurance? How are we going to handle capital? How are we going to handle the operational expenses? What are we doing with personnel? You tell me when you want that information back. Our deadline, our first deadline that we're working against is that we have to set a max millage by the last meeting in July. So sometime between now and then, we have to have complete development of a tentative budget.
I have a question.
Sure.
When we set our budget, our tentative budget, do we put allowance in there for money to go into reserve every year?
No, ma'am. We do not have operational reserves, nor do we have operational capital in our reoccurring revenues.
So how does revenues, how does our reserves increase?
Typically, it increases at the mid-year true-up when we get our audited financials, where we see either last year's board dollars expenditures that didn't come in as expensive or, you know, there was basically funding left. So those dollars get added to reserves and/or in years the constitutional offices have been able to give back dollars that also, we did have a couple of years ago where we saw B P P revenues came in far above what the state revenue projections had come in. So there's a host of different reasons that you would come with additional reserves. We shouldn't ever come into a situation where we lose reserves because expenditures can exceed your budgets. But you could come to a situation where revenues don't meet the projected budget. So there, there could be a time where there's an offset as well. But historically, we have grown reserves at each mid-year true-up. But we, we are not prepared for that conversation. We don't have audited financials yet. When we do, we'll, we'll bring them to you.
At some point, I want us to stop growing reserves. We have more than enough reserves. So we got to get out of this mindset at some point. Why are we carrying all this extra money? What is the purpose of it?
We have not historically.
The money is better utilized in the hands of the taxpayer who can spend it and generate more revenue for government. If that's what our goal is, to get revenue for government. So whether it's a dollar or fifty cents or six thousand dollars or a million dollars, it's better in the hands of people than it is in the hands of government. So we got to get away from this idea of increasing reserves. We need to get to the idea of having what we're required to have plus some, some extra in case if we have something that we didn't accommodate for. Because the minimum, obviously, the minimum that we're required, the maximum, the ten percent is required no matter what. Because that's for if there's an emergency or something happens. Then we got to figure out a number at some point, whether it's this board or another board, because I don't know that this board is ever going to get there. We have to figure out a number that actually works for this county and say, this is the amount, the percentage. The rest of it needs to go back to the community. I, I don't see any other option but to give it back to the community. And the only way to give it back to the community, unless we pass some resolution that we're going to write a check to everybody, which I don't even know if that's legal, is to roll back millage. And at some point, we got to get there. I don't know how we get there. But if we get money that comes back, it should be going back to the people. We don't need sixteen percent. We don't need, we don't need it. We have, we, there's nothing in any budget in this county that's ever shown that we've utilized it or needed it. If it's budgeted correctly. I've looked at budgets back for thirty years, both when I was a candidate and since I'm an elected official. It's never shown that we need more than what's required or if you go by the sixteen percent, that gives you that six percent buffer, which is a few million dollars. It's, no one's ever spent more than that. It's, so why are we continuing to have this conversation about carrying reserves and carrying reserves and carrying reserves? Get them to a reserve. The first question we should be answering is, what do we want our reserves to be? And then we should base it, base on that for that first initial year. Then every year, work towards maintaining that reserve number. That's, that's where our starting point is wrong, in my opinion. Is we're, we're looking at it from the wrong perspective. We need to look outside the box a little bit and say, hey, listen, we have this extra money, we shouldn't spend it because it's not ours. Why are we keeping it in a bank account? It's stupid, in my opinion. My opinion is it's dumb. For any government, not, not just Putnam County, for any government in the world.
Okay. But to Commissioner Wilkerson, to answer your question about how reserves grow, there are no operational dollars that go to reserves. There's no contingency dollars that go to reserves. In historic years, most recent, the, the masses of those reserve dollars have come from attrition. So when we couldn't fill positions in different divisions who were having staffing issues, that's where a large portion of those dollars came from. I'm, I'm proud to tell you that those divisions have righted their, their hiring practices. So you are going to, the better we budget, the less you're going to have that increase to reserves every year. Now, we did see some state revenues, the state projection... They do their own... The state revenue projection forecast people do their own projections. We did see some revenues that came in higher than expected. So, I do believe you're gonna have a cushion this year, but I don't believe you're gonna continue to see that same cushion in the years moving forward, because we've been able to fill those fire rescue positions, those public works positions, all of those positions that have sat vacant for so very long.
So, that cushion... We can't really take it in, because we don't know... As far as the budget and operational, because we don't really know what that cushion is. We don't know if we're getting anything back from the constitutional officer, so we can't consider that either.
And historically, the board has used the reserves exclusively to fund the capital purchases. Everything from tractors to bulldozers to buildings, to boat ramps, you name it. That is the only source of funding you currently have for your capital budget.
And then, if... To J R.'s point, if he ends up needing money for the road department, and there's a shortage, we can pull that out for...
From contingency, yes. You can't pull it out of one of your capital reserves, but yes, you do have contingency lines that are expected for that, if whatever expenses come up that are more than what we originally budgeted for.
So, in the spreadsheet that you provided, it shows the additional expenses that we have for the year. And when we put in the nine point two that Chair Turner was proposing, Commissioner Harvey, were we only short six hundred thousand?
That's correct, in additional expenses. It does not account for any adjustment to personnel.
And it also doesn't account for the million dollars for health insurance that we're estimating.
Nor does it... I mean, again, these are just increases known to date that are not internal to us. They do not have any direct reflection on operations. So, this does not count utilities. It would not count medical supplies. It would not count material for public works. This is just our external agencies that we have no basic control over, for lack of a better term, Medicaid, medical examiner, cadaver transport, courthouse security, which we contract out a portion of that. Those are things that don't have any impact, and they have no direct meaning or...
To the operation.
To the operation.
But there are a million dollars in additional expenses.
But it also doesn't take into account any of the items that came in under last year's budget, too, that's moving forward also.
Yep.
We budgeted for five-dollar diesel fuel last year, three fifty right now. So, I'm just saying that it... There's also a lot of items on the other side of this, too. So, while we're looking at this, we can't just look at one side and say, "Oh, we need more money. The sky's falling." We can't do that. We've got to look at both sides. A budget is supposed to be a outline of what we're gonna do and how we're gonna spend our money. That's what it's supposed to be. We have a mid-year true-up for additional revenues, but very seldom do we have additional or less expenses for the first half of the year, because we don't know that we're not gonna use that money in the second half of the year.
Right.
You know, so you can't really have a mid-year true-up for expenses. It's very difficult to do. So, I think you got to look at both sides of this. I just don't think it's being unrealistic to ask for a small reduction in a millage rate on a year that we're making that much additional funds.
So, you know, in all fairness, in learning some more information since I've been sitting here, I don't disagree with you on that either, as far as being able to lower the millage rate now that I have some additional information.
Well, could we agree to let the staff look... Move forward in looking at the nine point two? I know Commissioner Adams, Zach wants more. I'd love more myself, but I just don't see how we can and be realistic. Commissioner Harvey, could you live with that?
Well, I think that was my proposal, was to... You know, the constitutionals are hearing this. Let's look at... And then, they can get back to us at a budget meeting when we have it.
I would be good with that.
Good with that, Commissioner. I thought that's where we're gonna work to with the understanding that it could go up. Because I'll just go ahead and say this. I don't think it's fair if we've got to fund other things outside of the B O C and the public works what we're actually responsible for, and gotta take it out of what we... Our cookies we got left.
I agree with that.
Without being able to raise that up and cutting again, because we've... We've come up short sometimes.
Well, the only budget that we... That this board doesn't control, for lack of a better term, on how much money that we give them, is the property appraiser. If the property appraiser asks for more money than his percentage, and the board doesn't feel that that's proper or whatever, then the board has an appeal process they can go through to the Department of Revenue. I believe it has to happen by a certain date, whatever that is. And the board can write a letter to appeal the property appraiser's budget. So, it'll be totally up to the board if they decide to do that, or if he's the only one that doesn't want to come within his percentage. You can't... You can't convince me that the constitutionals can't do it within their percentage, just the same as if the board has to fund it all, that I'm not for it either, to be honest with you, because I don't think it's fair to make the board pay for all the cuts on just the board's side.
I agree with that.
The constitutionals have to... Have to work off the same percentages that the board has to work off of. And so, you know, the... Anyhow, so if we could look... Can we look at the... Tell them to look at the nine point two, that suit you? Commissioner Adams, Zach, can we start from there? Good with you guys?
Yeah, and that last statement is it's just not... It would not be fair for the B O C to have to fund everything, and then, we're just cutting ourselves short again, because we're all in this game together, is to try to retain people, quality people, and provide the services that our citizens expect.
Chairman, I need to say something.
You know, from emergency services, to fire service, to, you know, to everything. So, I'm okay with that, as long as you have the understanding that we're kind of in agreement that we're not gonna take it on the chin without, you know, taking care of this side also, the way we feel it should be. That's what they're doing on their side. That's what their jobs are. I'm not criticizing...
I agree with...
...the data and fact.
I agree with what you're saying, in that it should be shared amongst everyone. But what's not fair is the fact that we continue to carry forward millions of dollars in reserves that are the taxpayers' money, and they have no access to and no use for it, and we don't utilize it. So, that's what's not fair, in my opinion. You guys can have your own opinions if you want, but we're carrying twelve million dollars. We only need to carry six point seven, or eight, whatever you want to call the number. That's three to four million dollars more. If you go to ten million, it's two million dollars. And if we're using that for capital stuff, we have. We voted for things that come up, and we've utilized some, but we have that six percent to utilize. So, that's still two point seven million dollars. And that's what we're supposed to be... We should be budgeting that. We should be budgeting that. We should be budgeting the capital stuff that we know about and that we think is gonna happen, or that each of us commissioners want to have happen in our districts or in the county. And we should be putting that as part of the budget. And then, whatever's left needs to go back to taxpayers. So, that's what's not fair, is the taxpayers' money is sitting here, year over year, and we're carrying twelve to sixteen million dollars worth of reserves, and it's not our money.
Commissioner, I appreciate the philosophical differences, and I appreciate the conversation. All I'm trying to do is move this forward. So, we're gonna look at the nine point two. The next thing she... That they asked for was the direction...
Related to personnel.
On personnel scenario, fifteen dollars an hour and five percent. Does that suit everybody for her to try to work towards that?
Yeah, most definitely.
That's what the state's offering.
Yeah, most definitely.
Okay. So, that's number two. Number three was advise staff on direction for the constitutional officers' budget development. I think we've done that during this conversation, too, haven't we?
Yes, sir. Just, did you want presentations or forego them at this time?
I don't need a presentation. I just need everybody to stay within their percentages. If they can't, they're certainly welcome to come and talk to the board and explain why they can't stay within their percentage.
Thank you.
Unless the board has a difference of opinion in that. And the whole idea of this percentage deal is, is basically to have this conversation, set the millage rate, do it all by percentage, and there's none of this back and forth and arguing and carrying on over, "Oh, I get another twelve dollars and twenty cents this month." No, it's just all... Should be a flowing process. It shouldn't be this hard. It just doesn't have to be this hard. So, okay, so, y'all need anything else, Julianne? Okay, we're gonna move forward then with... And we've already done code enforcement. We're gonna move to appointments. Commissioner Adams, Zach. Commissioner Harvey.
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Pickens.
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
I have none.
I want to appoint Ken Mahathie back to the Waterways and Trails Committee. He's agreed to serve on that another term. That's District Three appointment. So, we're gonna move into public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed in the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to the deputy clerk, actually over here. So, I have today David Shavuko. Shaveko, please come forward, sir. And if you'd give us your name and address for the record, sir.
Absolutely. My name is David Shaveko. I'm at four twenty New Jersey Avenue. Good morning. Or good afternoon now. I almost don't want to share anything, so we can just all go home. But I'm here representing the credible messengers of Florida, which is a newly Washington-backed grassroots movement helping reduce crime in communities, where people with lived experiences dedicated to giving back to the community by promoting youth crime prevention in order to reduce statistics through mentoring and relationship building in the community. I also represent Von Chaveco, which is my company name, and I'm a judge and an evaluator for the American Kennel Club. And as such, I'm creating a partnership with the D O C, Department of Corrections, and Putnam County Correctional Institution, in order to help with the dog issues in the county. My plan is to create something in Putnam County, by Putnam County, for Putnam County, in order to promote responsible dog ownership in the community. And my purpose for appearing here today is not only to introduce myself and the work that I'm doing in the county, but to make myself available to the county, and hoping that I can count on the county's support in the near future concerning my efforts to heal our community. Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming today. Is there anybody else in attendance who'd like to speak under public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to the Honorable Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, I'd like to, again, congratulate the graduates that we had of our Leadership Academy a couple of weeks ago. They were, again, thank you to county administration. There were several county staff that attended, and also representative from the Chamber of Commerce. So, just wanted to take a quick minute to congratulate all of them for completing that, and also, the whole discussion we're having on the budget. Just, I'll go ahead and put my input on the record. I'm good with that amount, set at that millage rate. So, I think my request was about half of what the allocation was, so we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. County Attorney Captain Commando. Okay, thank you. County Administrator, Mr. Suggs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I had two or three things, but I'm gonna, with the length of the meeting, I'll cut it down to just one. One I think is extremely important, and that is, thank you all for the support of animal services here today. I do know that our staff is aware of what was said. They're... They want to say personally to thank you, D twenty-five, as well. And so, I think you're right, Ms. Young. That leadership in that department is making great strides. And so, I'm very pleased with what we're doing over there, and I'm glad you five are as well. And my last comment is, Matt, I appreciate the conversation last week. Colonel, thank you so much. And for the other folks that have already left here today, I appreciated their input as well, and we'll just keep moving forward. But thank you, guys, and thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to do what we do.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Adams, Zach?
I have none, too.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank you for your leadership on today's conversation. I know it's, you know, it might sound... Seem kind of disoriented, but it wasn't. It was a conversation that we needed to have and wanted to have, and we can't have anywhere else but right here. So, I'm glad that we are having those conversations. And I look forward to the future of Putnam County and how we can better serve our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner. I'd like to echo Administrator Suggs' sentiments on the animal control. I appreciate the hard work, Julianne, you getting in there and getting involved. I appreciate all the people involved in the evaluation and moving forward. You know, the building and the kennels and things like that, I think it's very positive. I want to thank, they're not here anymore, but Linda Young, who serves on the Animal Control Advisory Committee, for being here, along with Diane Sykes. They're also both involved with the South Putnam Animal Network for their interest. And I think we made some great strides today. We've been working on this for a long time. And what Commissioner Wilkinson brought up, and I have stressed this, this information needs to be given to the public more often about what services they do provide and the amount of strays that they've taken in, and the adoptions, and all the things that they do that sometimes media may not pick up on, you know? So, that needs to be... Needs to be given out more often. So, I appreciate you bringing that and talking about that. And I want to give kudos to Public Works, J R. Grimes and J T. You go back and tell your staff that I had a compliment on the mowing in South Putnam. It's... We're down in District One. I'm sure they started in other districts, and I'm the last district to get the mowing in this particular cycle.
Hey, y'all, West Putnam.
But anyway, they are doing a great job, and they're getting the trash picked up. And so, I had a number of compliments, and it really looks good. And also, a few drainage issues that we've been dealing with. Public Works, y'all took care of those in a very fast manner and had a lot of compliments on those. So, just thank you. I hate to lose Robert Freeman, so... But he did a great job, and I wish him well in his retirement, and that's all I got.
I enjoyed that immensely with Commissioner Wilkinson saying, "Of course, it's District One."
It's District One. That means you get to go first, right?
Even our newest commissioner knows what we're talking about.
That's the way it should be, but that's not the way it always happens.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
I actually have nothing else to say. I think I've been a busy person today.
I need to have a brief discussion with the board. We've got some budget meetings coming up that require five oh five workshops in the afternoon. Would y'all rather have them on a board day? Or would you rather have them on a different day, like a Monday afternoon or a Thursday afternoon? I don't think we can do it on a Wednesday. I think there's an issue with Wednesday, because it's church night or whatever. So, it would probably need to be, unless y'all want to have them Fri... Or Friday evenings at five oh five.
Yeah, I like the four days as well, because I already blocked out the day.
Julianne, could you tell us about when it is on... For, and I guess it sounds like they want to do them on Tuesdays at five oh five?
Okay, if we hit it on Tuesday, we've got the second meeting, September.
Okay, well, don't... We don't have to have any in July to set the millage rate to start with on a five oh five?
The last meeting in July, you would have a five oh five. It does not have to be, but we have in past. So, I guess you could give me direction if you want to change that.
July twenty-seventh at five oh five.
I don't understand. We'll talk about it later. So, basically, we're gonna... Whatever days we have to have a five oh five, we'll have them on the board meeting days until further notice. Well... Okay, we all talked to the school board, because, you know, I think they actually meet on the same day we do. Don't builders only meet today?
I don't think so.
Okay. What is the date of our next board meeting? After this one. Okay, I think they meet on the twentieth. So, all right, so maybe they're on the same day as us. All right, well, good deal. The other thing I'd just like to mention real quickly is, yeah, some of these meetings get a... Sound like they're getting just a little bit out of hand between us commissioners, and I certainly try not to make that happen. I truly do. But, you know, a lot of the public already knows, but it's the absolute truth. We can't talk about these things outside of this meeting, unless it's an advertised meeting. And so, sometimes, when it sounds like we're discussing things for the first time, it's because we're discussing things for the first time. We cannot sit down outside of an advertised meeting. It's against the law. So, I appreciate y'all sticking in here with us today. And unless there's nothing else to come before the board today, I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned.